We have to go. So, all to order, special meeting of the town of Los Gatos, Town Council Study Session. The topic is budget and we are here at the Police Operations Building. And I would just say that we have excellent AV equipment and the microphones are very sensitive. So they will pick up any side conversations that you might have. So it's a little different than in the council chambers where we turn on and off the microphone. So we'll just proceed, but I wanted to head up about that. And so if we could start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Esteban?
Here.
Councilmember Annie?
Here.
Councilmember Vidalmi?
Here.
Is there more?
Here.
Mayor Hiddins?
Here. So with that, we go to verbal communications. And members of the public may speak on the item that's on the agenda. Actually, we have three items, so that would be fine. And are we accepting comments by Zoom this evening as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll start with Kimberly Snyder. And this is with regard to the first item.
Okay, do you have seen it? It's probably out there.
You can stand and if that's okay.
Okay.
It's just easier.
Awesome. I believe this is the appropriate item for me to talk on this point. So, good evening. As many of you know, my name is Kimberly Snyder. I'm the Executive Director for the Museum of Los Gatos. For typically for your continued partner support over the years. If you can believe it, it's been ten years since we took a leap of faith together and relocated to Los Gatos. As a service provider and a community partner, I'm here this evening to provide you with critical updates regarding the impact of federal funding budget cuts on the museum and our plans for the upcoming year. On March 14th, as I spoke in our previous meeting, the president issued the executive order that significantly reduced the seven agencies, including the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which is IMLS, a government agency that provides critical funding to museums and libraries for five museums like Niu and IMLS program is changing. And we have had two concurrent grants totaling $140,000 through 2026. We have the applied to the recent grant cycles. At Niu, the IMLS grant is funding critical projects that serve our community, provide educational opportunities for children and family, and support the preservation and care of the town's cultural heritage. On April 8th, unfortunately, we received notice of termination of our grant award, which has caused us to reduce activities associated with the Los Gatos history project. Considering this information, I am not hopeful of the stability of our other grants, which are other IMLS grant that supports eight through five school tours and the excellent development of revitalization with the Moet Moletly Tribe. With federal funding in jeopardy, it's paramount that our community, individuals, local county and state governments come together to make a plan to preserve our shared values. And in response to these unprecedented budget cuts, we have plans to pivot our upcoming programs and exhibitions. And as we look ahead, I know that we're all under tight budget constraints, both the museum and the town and many entities. We're not alone in this and I understand that. And as you guys look ahead to your budget preparations and planning, I would seriously consider the museum in that constellation as we navigate these uncertain times together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I had some questions about the amount of grants.
Yes.
If you don't mind, you mentioned two grants.
Yes.
And you tell us how much was the grant? And how much is still outstanding on the grant?
So we had the Los Gatos History Project that was $190,000 that was awarded and $45,000 that we won off that was revoked. And that's through August 2025. And for the Moet Moletly Exhibition and also the school tours that it supported, that is $90,000 that was, or sorry, it was $110,000 that was awarded, $90,000 that will be revoked. And that's through August 2026.
And if, sorry to put you on the spot, but what percent of your budget did these?
About 15 to 18%.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we've already started to think about like, what's the bronze silver gold version of these various projects?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? That's the only card that I have. Yeah, that's mine. That's great. So if you don't like, just stay out of comments. The mics are very sensitive, so.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, next time we measure. My name is Jennifer Lynn, CEO of the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. I want to begin by expressing my sincere appreciation for the town's long-standing partnership with the Chamber. Together, we built a bond of collaboration that supports not only our business community, but also enhances Los Gatos' economic vitality and our town's system development. As we consider the town's budget direction for the coming fiscal year, I respect the urge to do destination marketing, including the Chamber's major events as a critical pillar of economic vitality. These events are far more than a few celebrations. From the wine walk and Taste of Los Gatos to our holiday Palooza and National Memories Holiday Program, these experiences are magnets that draw thousands of visitors downtown, fueling commerce, elevating our town's brand profile and helping businesses weather challenging economic times. When businesses do well, our whole community does well. We recognize that financial challenges facing the, we recognize the financial challenges facing the town and that tough budget decision can help create. As any way of course, we encourage you to consider how strategic investments and destination marketing can serve as a catalyst for the economy and overall health. With the right investment, you can build on what's worked and create positive momentum for Los Gatos. Looking ahead, our Chamber is actually prepared to expand our services even further. In 2026, we plan to launch a marketing campaign aligned with the Super Bowl and Gold Cup, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to draw, estimate six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand people to the Bay Area. With the right level of investment, we will maximize this opportunity for thousands of people to develop and work with. Taking their time or passion and for considering how Chamber sees Los Gatos grow. Between how we feel.
I had a similar question about how, how much are the grants that you expect to receive from the town? I believe for the Wine Walk and Taste or other things. And what percentage of your budget?
I think you're sticking to the contract that we have with the town. So the $8,000, we have factored in that we actually do need all of it because we're doing action more than ever, especially now with the 2026 school events and wine tour like after that these are population. What they were planning to expand on digital marketing and be able to drive like mobile passes and having passwords and packages, things like that. So we think we found a digital platform partner to do that. But giving more with less is probably not really considered.
And so you refer to an existing contract. Does that include the Super Bowl and Gold Cup activities per se?
No, as you know, that is a very unknown opportunity. So those are outside of the Minnesota contract services. It falls for sure under destination marketing that is to our portfolio.
Yeah.
So I didn't answer your question. The $8,000 is about one-fifth of our.
And so I think that with these and with some of the new view activities, also there's significant ROI to the town on the money that's given. And so it may be, we're just at the beginning of this process, but it might be valuable to understand what the potential is. Understanding that it's difficult to be precise, but to give some kind of a ballpark about what kind of returns there are for not only the businesses, but also the tax revenues for the town. So as we continue with this process, we may come and ask you some questions about that.
That's it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, do you have comments, Mr. Pervell?
We're trying to be going right now.
We are taking for all three items, one, two, and three.
I have two.
Okay, go ahead.
Shannon Road, retaining wall. Is that section of the retaining wall, section of Shannon Road that the town recently recovered from San Jose? If so, why did we pay what we did to acquire that? Get some money back from San Jose that is not nearly enough to recover the cost of all the repairs that need to be done? Because that owed that section to their, it's in just terrible shape and it's sliding down. It's going to have to point to my left, just right on that road. Would that go the longer way around? It's surprising. So the, I believe the town should take some action in order to get the government agency that we acquired that section from to pay for the repairs that are necessary because they, they do show that there was some disservice here at this mall, but no real repairs, no reinforcement of the road going. And they misrepresented what that was to us. So that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other cards, so I'm going to close public comment. Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Just go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Julie McCollough and I am here for Niu. I'm the President of the Board. And I'm just going to speak real briefly about the capital improvement. We are sort of part of that right now with, we're tenants of the town. And right now, the, your HR department is expanding. And so we gave part of our office space so that they could have a window in their conditions and working could be better. Which is wonderful. We're getting the ramp for the Civic Center and hopefully they'll do some improvements around the Civic Center grounds as well. But with all the improvements, unfortunately, Niu is now in a little bit of a predicament. We have lost our office space. So we do not fit in our office spaces, we do. So we are now in the Lick Studio, which is the studio that is in the museum that we're able to have art lessons and programs and summer programs. Therefore, we are not able to facilitate any funds because we have lost space. There's one solution that we possibly are, we brought in some people to try to help us with the furniture and construction. And we would like to propose for you to be part of this, finish the capital improvement to make our working facilities as well as the HR facilities up to par and functioning for everyone. And so we would like to propose that you will consider, maybe you would like to expand into our studios. Therefore, we don't need that, we need more space. So we would have to expand and move just one wall. Therefore, our offices would have, be able to all work together. Because they're right now, they're in the studio that the Lick family gave the money for and they did not give the money for us to be having an office. They gave the money for us to give back to the community and to the children and the community for improvement. So meanwhile, you're considering your capital improvement. I know that we've invested all the funds for that improvement to the Civic Center. Would you consider helping us sort of complete the project and make Niu space a little bit better? Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes verbal communications. And so now we will move into a report. But before we do, I just want to set the stage for what we're doing this evening because it's a little bit different. It's different for a couple of reasons. The, this is a study session. So no action will be taken tonight. We're not going to do anything that would cause official action taken because this is put as a study session. And so that means that we will receive information. We will ask questions. We can give some general direction. But in my mind, under procedure, we can take official action tonight. It's also the beginning of the process. So we were there with some detailed financial information. But the actual budget, the full budget, I believe, was only now released maybe 24 hours ago or something like that. And so I don't think the public or the council has the benefit of the budget information, the full budget information. But because it was clear that there are some challenges and a projected deficit in our budget, I think it's admirable that town staff took the initiative. It started the conversation about the situation that we're in and the providing the ability to ask our finance commission, who's the next step in this process, to look into some things. And so the, the study session, there will be no minutes, I believe, from the study session because there'll be no actions taken. And the minutes would only reflect actions. So I believe the recording will be online and available. And that, when is the first finance commission meeting on the budget?
It's going to be next Monday.
Next Monday. And how many meetings do they have?
We have capable security things with the finance commission before the budget comes to pass.
Oh, great. So with that, I just wanted to set the stage. And so, now manager or finance director would like to kick us off. Okay. I closed public comment. I'm sorry. Jonathan, should I reopen public comment?
I'm not exactly scratching.
Okay, if we have a public comment, we will take additional public comment power. So go ahead. We've taken public comment from members. I'll turn this in. You can turn that in later. Let's get on with it.
Voice standard.
Yeah, you can stand. It's easier to hear.
My use not having a clock, so keep me honest. Today I want to talk about civil and important. Living with the arts. Different families convinced by their belief in pride, our town needs to do the same. A certain austerity isn't outside of this back end of its opportunity. It's about focus, efficiency, it's about prioritizing what matters most. I believe safety, spirit and prosperity for every resident. I'll just mention four topics. First, I think she said with her, it's pretty simple. This must start with top, unnecessary decisions. Uncontrolled spending risks our financial stability and our future generation. By aligning our budget with our resources, we ensure a sustainable future without compromising essential services. Second, I think this is where we must reject the taxes to ease our debts. These measures punish hard work with them as a symbol of the businesses. Our sales tax revenue hasn't budged or grown over a decade. I think this is a sign our business is in need of support, not more or less. Raising taxes creates unintended consequences for such as reducing consumer spending which slows economic growth. Instead, we should foster, excuse me, my glasses are bad. Instead, we should foster an environment where businesses can thrive and contribute to our shared prosperity. Third, maybe this is a little bit harder. I think we should stop wasting budgets in the clear areas. So we use an example, the road bans. I think we spent a huge amount of money. I've heard millions, but I have no idea for months, but it's not true. We never made the roads and agreed that commuters face daily delays of many minutes of work every day or even after. This can add to hours of lost time for each computer each month. In a town where traffic can already feel a bit like beach day, automated projects offer ill-measurable change. Worse, seeing great roads on high-traffic routes for hindered emergency responses. Putting safety areas, establishing best infrastructure that serves our community, not experiment. These those that frustrate. Fourth is the last one. Man transparency in our public funds suspension. Maybe it's there, but I'm aware of it. I actually have data that was so routine. Every dollar belongs to us as taxpayers or to you, all of us as taxpayers. We deserve to know our beginning, where it was valued by our mind. To be specialized in, the interest paid for us at heart. As a town soul, you're going to be sure to be ready to ensure transfer. But giving, it's trust ensures every decision lies with shared prosperity. I guess in closing, I'm just calling you to be right. Focus our resources on what matters, safety, prosperity, prosperity. We showed you the same in here.
Okay, and just for the record, Mr. Swatter, your name if you don't.
Your loss.
Thank you. Okay, so I will, oh, okay.
Can I speak about item three now?
Yes, we're doing.
Okay, so I wanted to speak in support of the option to discontinue doing the competitive one-time grant. I think they're problematic. They're costing staff a lot administrative time, our time to answer them. And they're problematic also, you know, you noted that in your report. But I was, I thought of a couple of other things that really bother me about now. I think that we're a really small type of community and our council members and staff etc. are all involved in the community and in nonprofits in our community. And I'm concerned that if anyone has any involvement in any of the organizations that are receiving one-time grant, that it could have the appearance of impropriety. Even if there is no corruption going on, it could have the appearance of that. And I think for that, I think it's really, really problematic. A hundred thousand dollars is not the money for that to happen with. And then the second reason is we're very concerned about possible lack of transparency in some of the organizations. I do believe that at least one of them is possibly taking our taxpayer money that's for our community and making it available to people who live anywhere within the town. I'm not sure that that serves our community and effect. So anyway, I just wanted to speak in, in word about that option. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Lynn, it's Lynn, right?
Yes, thanks. And I will close public, your comments. And if we, town manager did, did start it, items, I guess it's one, two, and three. All right, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. Can the two council members hear me from apart? Okay, perfect. As the mayor mentioned earlier, the mics are extremely sensitive. They will capture whispers or side comments even outside of the room. So I would be cautious if I keep from the conversations, lest you want to be recorded in post-period on our video. I was going to the second slide, we. Make sure, sure. I apologize to the members of the public. They have to turn their back to take a look at the outline. This venue made it easier for the council and staff sitting in the org allowed for the free flow of conversation. It's why we took this venue. So I'll do my best to give you the opportunity to read. There's hard copies on the table if you'd like to grab a copy so you're not going to continue to feature around. Otherwise, you're welcome to turn your chair around while we go through the presentation we want to see. What we'll first do is start with a brief introduction again of five-year plans and projections that the council will only be seeing. We'll talk about the expenditure reduction options that the partner heads came together and developed. The revenue options that are offset to expenditures and innovation and efficiency that can be garnered as well as whatever the next step. The purpose of this meeting is really to give you a full insight to the limited budget at a high level. Only we see the budget now from the four hours. There's clearly pages that need to be made, that's why it's preliminary. And we're looking forward to general guidance, the direction, things that we think are important for us to discuss finance commission and things that our board brought, sitter and develop that final budget over the course of later. In terms of the development process, I'll quickly run through how a budget that developed in government. We typically start on a timeline of January to June. Our fiscal year starts July 1 and ends June 30 of the subsequent year. When we develop guidelines in the timeline for the budget, there's a lot of steps to go into it. We initially look at the revenues and look at projections of the revenues to determine how much money we have to work with. We look at our personnel and the costs associated with it, which represents 65 plus percent of our operating budget. And it's obviously a primary driver of our activity and a primary means in which we deliver our services. We set strategic priorities, which thankfully this year the council made a huge movement in February of 2025 to move to various strategic-based priorities and to identify three of those priorities. The top priorities were found to help bad as to the process, who's very thankful and helped us here. And then we develop the operating and capital expenditure budgets. And when we complete that process, we then determine what the bottom lines look like. And then we engage in that budget balancing and deficit reduction process, which is what we're currently in right now. We seek public influence on the budget, not just for the council, for the community. And then we bring forth a final budget for approval, knowing that that budget when initially approved is just the first budget. During the course of the year, there are changes that come to councils, they may adjust to reflect the reality of our situation. Our revenue, specifically our top two revenue sources of property tax and sales tax. We utilize two of our consulting firms, which are the two top firms that work with most specifically California Avenue and HDL, help to overlay projections for the next year. We're very realistic, in my experience, and to be conservative for the revenue projection. Our finance department and departments works and are generally conservative on the expenditure side also. You would hate to be overestimating revenue, only end up under or estimating expenditure could end up over and then end up a budget that two-thirds of the way through having to cut just balance the budget that is not. On the personal expenditure side, we continue this year, for next year, where we started this year of assuming a 4.6% vacancy background, I'll talk more about that on the next slide. And then our capital budget switches to a tiered system where before it was a five-year capital budget where we programmed everything in each year we think we were going to do regardless of consideration of staff capacity and our ability to deliver on those projects. We tiered those projects. In terms of our vacancy factor, next year we assume an approximate $1.9 million savings. That's the target for that vacancy. History indicates we generally have vacancies and turnovers. Senior positions that top staff are then replaced by positions at lower staff and a variety of things that change during the course of the year that generate savings. The best practice I'm getting by the government finance association is that you should, you should calculate and project vacant standing as a forecasting measure. However, that alone is insufficient. You have to also look at expenditure control to ensure you achieve that basis. In our five-year projection for the 2526 year, we estimate a structural deficit of approximately $3.7 million. We saw through that projection on the next slide. The deficit is generally driven by typical things that increasing costs, salary, pension obligation, cost of services, supply and capital. Uh, the deficit is generally driven by typical things that increasing cost salary, potential obligation, cost of services, supply and capital. Our forecast period goes through twenty for thirty, thirty one. And what's very clear is the growth in revenues does not match the growth for expenditure. On this next slide, luckily it's uh, large enough to be able to read. I consolidated down the five year projections. The five year projections are in the staff report, so you can see more detail, more blind eye elements. But here what I framed is the total operating revenue. Uh, as the first, so if you look at the gray lines, the total operating revenue is the top gray line. The total expenditures is the second gray line and the third is the net between those two with the revenue. Breathes you've done with being negatives. And then the white lines for revenues include any transferred in or sources of resource that come in from other funds. To be used during the course of the year. And the second white line is expenditures for the amount of funding that go out during the course of the year to get down to the bottom line. Uh, I don't have a structural number here, but we're very close to each other. What you can see here, if you break twenty three, twenty four, and if you go earlier in our history. Uh, net revenues are a surplus. We estimate at the end of this current fiscal year that we're going to get around a balance. It will be slightly in a surplus situation or deficit depending on how final number would play out. But next year conservatively, we look at about a three point seven million dollar deficit that will continue to grow. This does not include any consideration that we transfer money from revenue received next year into our reserves. Typically what we do, but in the beginning in twenty five, twenty six, we also project that we're going to. Transfer approximately one point one million dollars to capital, oversend money into different accounts. When you look at the five year projection, unlike previous years, there's only four hundred thousand dollars that we're putting towards pension costs and that's it. What does that mean? From an operating perspective, the money that's coming in is funding the activities that we generally have. It's resulting in a negative number and not leaving enough resources to continue to contribute to our capital program, our production of liabilities. And other things that we tend to set money aside for that some future times generate useful resources. And you, you can operate like that for a short period of time, but eventually you start to see significant impacts. Things such as degradation of our street condition, which currently is approximately on a scale of zero to a hundred, a hundred being. Perfect street for about eighty two. The goal for our pavement condition index, which is remarkable as cities go. It'd be great to retain that above eighty number if it's definitely can. Or to accelerate funding to our pension liabilities, which reduce the overall interest that we're paying on liabilities. Because funding it would be taking advantage of the long term, eternal investment that are pensions. I added a slide that was not in the staff report, just to give context. Our largest revenue source is related to property tax and sales tax. Our largest category of expenditure are salary and benefits that represent more than sixty five for our operating budget. As you can see here, the red bar grows faster than the blue bar. And then the blue and red lines show you the net change. That shows the difference between our revenue growing and our, and our salary and benefits growing is accelerating. Meaning as time goes on without a change in this trend. There is not, we will not have the ability to sustain the services that we have that are provided by staff. And because our two top revenue sources are fully expended by just salary benefits. The non-personal side of the budget or the amount we can contribute to capital or the amount we can contribute to accelerate funding for liability. Save us, save us on the interest that we have to pay. Uh, does not become a reality and our problem will continue to grow and then our cuts will continue to be a reality. This is unfortunately a lot of data that are sitting on this chart. This is uh, a listing of all the different reserves that we have. Uh, and under GAAP forty five, which are the accounting standards, there are five general fund reserves that we said we have. The top one being restricted, which is the most restricted, it needs. Funding can only be used in that manner and it's not available for any other activity. To the lowest level, which is the last non-holded line, which is called unassigned by balance, which is reports that have not been allocated for some purpose. In between that. The two biggest categories, assigned and committed, the difference there is committed. You're restricted to using those funds for a specific purpose under the highest law authorized. And assigned is budgetarily, we place those resources in specific category. And so what you'll see on this chart are actual results from the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Through what we would project or propose in the proposed budget by the end of the next fiscal year. At the bottom line, you can see as you go through this, these number. We go from a twenty seven million dollar general fund balance that grows to as high as thirty seven million. Uh, benefiting then from ARPA funding and then we see a drop down to about twenty five point nine billion. This assuming that the council takes no change on the revenue side of the funded budget. No change on expenditure reductions either and no efficiency for innovation during the course of the year that we would garner. And that the numbers we estimate are the numbers that become reality. That we're degrading that bottom line number, which is unassigned by balance, for four million, which is a new bucket we created this year to reflect the fact that. That we will have to dip into unrestricted funding and nearly zeroing that out by the end of next fiscal year. If we continue this practice and the numbers hold true to continue deficit spending. We then are going to be looking at other categories here in the general fund reserve and other reserves. Probably the appropriate reserve where we have capital project budgeted for future work. To just shore up the operating deficit that we. So the budget that we'll talk about is one way forward, but first I've also talked about what the internal tools we're putting in place. That are ongoing. First, uh, what we projected a year, next year, we will be leaning on reserves. Uh, to some extent, to allow us the time to see how the reality of the numbers play out, how large the deficit. We, we look at historically our projections versus what is actuals. There's sometimes quite a bit of variance where we project deficits because we're conservative on the revenue. And it, and the numbers tend to kind of come in higher or we're conservative on the expenditures and yet we have less expenditure during the course of the year. What was a projected deficit contributing to a projected surplus. But those differences started to narrow as the cost of. Loyalty for benefits and liabilities started to increase as well as our non-personnel contracts, the cost of doing business continued. But at least in year one, we are heavily leaning on reserves and that's what I'm recommending so that we don't impact operations. While doing more analysis to determine where we actually base significant changes that are structural and balance the budget over the long term. Secondly, we've changed the way we're doing our capital program to a three tiered system. I think I'll talk about that later, but now we'll do it on the second agenda. And then there's additional controls on expenditure that we are putting in place. One is position control that went into effect already. What this means is on any vacant permanent position that is, that apartment heads are seeking to fill. There's an extremely robust process they must endure through HR and town management before they receive authorization to build those position. The council has authorized those position. The council has funded it with an assumption of a vacancy saving. But even then, the analysis will be a written justification supported by data. We're looking at the operational impacts, the financial impacts, service level impacts, and really taking a robust look. Where chances are very hard to get a yes. So today it could be a no, tomorrow it could be a yes, but it really is a detailed issue that would be that that would generate some vacancy savings through that. Secondly, is general expenditure control where we will be implementing more robust analysis over any vehicle replacement that's being requested. Uh, at a department level, instituting a lower level budgetary control, which currently is at the department level. That the department directly controls their entire budget, how that money is spent. And now has to be classified at a category level, which is the lower level. And to move money between categories, having to justify those movements as necessary for our operations. Further timing control, and that will be additional mechanisms that we look at to ensure. That where we could save internally, we are saving, where money needs to go to key priorities for operations. But money is going to there to the extent possible. A note of caution. The tier, we have tiered options for expenditure reduction that were created as an executive team. This is something that hasn't generally occurred. What you'll see in cities when they're in deficit spending mode. Will come with one big list of reductions. That then the council has to figure out which ones do they take, how do they take it? And you usually see the most sacred cows being the first one at the top of the list that you know. Whatever is the most important to the town and community, that's number one. So of course you can't take that, thereby making it challenging for you to understand. How do I then provide recommendations to reduce the deficit when I have those kind of choices that are, that are facing. Uh, our staff came together, did a remarkable job to come up with four tiers. Uh, reached a party that provided nerve and blood. We discussed it, decided where things should fall based on the priorities of the town, the significance of the items. So that the most sacred calories are the first thing that's on the list. The things that are more tenable and that they're run and reads into the layers of reduction that are potential options. And all this was more of an exercise to understand that if we had the need to reduce. Uh, the purpose of it was to facilitate the conversation with council so that you're not starting from zero. Trying to figure it out yourself. And know that the numbers are all estimates, so when we estimate half a million dollars of savings, they may not necessarily be half a million. They're rough estimates, who we think the cost is in some cases, other cases. And then the current budget, if no action is taken, is built on some reduction in some revenue increase. But not a whole lot, the list of what we're talking. So this is not the first time I've been into jurisdiction and I was facing deficits. It seems like I've gone from one. Jurisdiction with problems to another. Luckily, Los Angeles isn't like my first jurisdiction where I served an effective rank who will taste and bankruptcy. The cascade of these fear draconian and fast. But I have a lot of work, a whole lot, I have a whole lot of public input. Here fortunately, we have some time. Our situation isn't as dire as it was in Chicago when we was. Facing eight weeks to put a bunch together in eight months before we couldn't make clear. Well, we do have significant immersers that can help give us the time to breathe, think, gather input before we make rash decisions. So don't feel like we have to make everything work today. We'll get to what we did again. However. Over the course of my last twenty nine years in government, there are some patterns that you tend to see when you're going through that, so reduction. You'll face resistance uh, in, in doing reduction because you'll get public pressure, opposition to things that you can touch here or look at. And so when it comes to government, we like to add and spend money that tax spirit provide us. But we find it really challenging to reduce or eliminate, eliminate something I commonly tell councils. I also tell them, you can have anything you want, just not everything. And that's also challenging in reduction. We also are faced with challenges balancing what is essential and non-essential services. The difficulty really comes down to, we can tell, say, a service is essential. And we're right, it is essential. But the service level, measure it at that. What is essential about that could be different. And then we have a hard time distinguishing between what is an essential service and what level of service. For that service is really essential and what we can do with a lesser level of service to fit the revenue that we have in support of. And that's where that third point is about the level of service. We also have to deal with uncertainty. We have a five year projection. We're moving forward to bring external consultants in that have experience in doing financial condition assessment and five year projections. So that there is an objective view to what our deficit is. Because while we can do a more robust valuation, when you are faced with difficult challenges, what typically happens? You attack the numbers and then you attack the people that are presenting, which would be the finance director and myself. To try to push back on the reduction that we're facing. So I'd rather bring an external firm into you that has done this before, it does in the different communities. And that the challenges really are against that firm and that staff are left to be objective about how do we actually execute our position with the council. And then we need to look at the long and short term of it. Uh, to some extent, we can kind of the short term, but some short term cuts may have long term implications. You cut here, you save a hundred thousand dollars, but over the course of ten years, that facility may cost you a million dollars if that is cut good today. So we have to be mindful of what seem like relatively benign cuts today could have hurt more in the future. It could be social services, facility or et cetera. So how do we move forward? And I will run through the reduction proposals quickly. It's like they're already in the staff report, I've just framed it differently, the slides to help facilitate the conversation. We'll talk about expenditure, that's production. Uh, we'll talk about a listing of revenue opportunities that were consolidated by the department head. Talk a little bit about how we can improve our service delivery, be more efficient. And we'll talk about innovation and economic development because deficit reduction isn't always about cutting. It's also about over the long term. How can you structurally change the factors that impact your key revenue sources? And that's something that may not help us in the short term, but if we implement those at the same time we're doing reductions today. Tomorrow we are facing the kind of reductions that we will get. The departments came together, this is not a town manager directed reduction option plan. So the four tiers you're seated in, is it me coming forward, say this is what it shall be. This is collectively your team, coming, coming together, presented each of their departments. Challenging each other's departments about what is a higher, a higher reduction or a reduction and feeling. As much as we don't like reductions, comfortable that this was a team effort to come up with these off, these options. So we'll start with the highest level of team, tier one. Tier one are really efficiency. Items that the expectation was that when we presented, they were actually items that we were going to take at the town. And implementing in the budget. We've implemented some of these, so about two hundred, about a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred thousand of them. But there's another three hundred thousand tier one. That have not been implemented, this is the first round that we were considering. And one of the more significant items that are in that list. Center around commission budget, which the council has provided twenty five hundred dollars for commission to be able. Allow us to mission utilize for whatever purpose further is the mission of that mission. In a lot of cases, uh, things are purchased, lost gathers type things that are passed out and events and whatnot. And so we're recommending that be defunded and that we move to an alternate measure where we buy things at fault that have our labels on them. And then we provide them to the commission as necessary, or maybe even for the person that they have, maybe in guard suspicion. Tier two service reductions. Would add, would add an additional billion dollar, half a million dollars would that be on the way. These are people reductions. And they do start to impact some of our strategic priorities that we've all ended this year. Uh, a couple of the areas and I'll go through and number those two slides here. In terms of the unhoused services, it would reduce the portable restrooms currently provided at park, the downtown. And it would reduce some of the hotel overnight stay programs that we use for inclement weather. It would not eliminate the overnight hotel program and we believe by the instruction as to how that we deploy that, but we can still provide. Protection of our house to be your meaning, with the existing budget being reduced. In terms of emergency management, we have brought on board or immediately bringing on board the emergency manager. We've also had part time hours in, that were here in place, because we didn't have a full time position. That we're looking at reducing some of those hours to a tune of eighteen thousand. And then we're also looking at defunding at least half the billion dollars the council allocated. That money doesn't disappear, it goes to our fund bank, so it's still available for an emergency, should we want to use it. But we don't project over the course of the next year, need to expend that money. That money was really intended to be there for, if we wanted an evaluation of something to be done, we could do that. We are still doing vegetation management, we have allocated money there, they call cards above words. Is doing a remarkable job at spending the money that we've allocated. And we are not spending the money the federal government has because it's a question as to whether the federal government will still be there and pay that amount. But we felt it important to continue that progress to protect the hillside from the fire. The attorney's office is looking at reducing resources that it has, so it will slow down response. Uh, we will eliminate the power washing downtown and the decorative tree lighting, which we say is about a hundred thousand. Uh, our plaza park fountain is currently facing some maintenance challenges, so we're looking at. Uh, our Plaza Park Fountain is currently facing some maintenance challenges, so we're looking at. It wasn't fortuitous, it just happened that it failed and we're looking at six to eight weeks uh operating, but if we. Turn that off for the year, it would be about a twenty thousand dollar savings. In terms of the park amenities, we're removing, we would be recommending removal of the doggy bags, which we've experienced as folks. Uh, don't take just one or two, they tend to go there when we fill them up and take a whole bunch of them. That would be much for anybody else, which is a problem, it doesn't serve the mission why we wanted to have a doggy bag. Uh, we'd be reducing uh resource offerings at the library, about eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, yes, every newspaper you may be used to getting access to available, it'll be a far less. We would be looking at utility subsidies that we provide to third parties and asking, uh, if that continue to subsidize that using taxpayer dollars. And looking to those third parties who benefit from that, start paying for utilities. And then we're doing some cuts on staff development, uh, in in training and membership. The next layer down, third tier, thus having significant service impact. And impacts the part-time staff. We rely on part-time staff. Uh, the estimated additional savings to about one point one million, most of that is ongoing to about one billion. And as we go through these, which is a lot longer than the list that was in the staff reports, I'll just hit some highlights. There will be noticeable service delivery impacts. This is the degree to which we are actually looking at production. In terms of the police complaint process, a recommendation to move it from the town attorney's office to the town manager's office. Although this is in tier three, this is an item that I would recommend that we implement. Uh, all the time that the town attorney expended on this intake process. Is time that has for other activities that have to be farmed out to contract attorneys. Uh, and so given at least my expertise in law enforcement, I believe we can garner some savings for you, up to town attorney to be able to get more work. Does actually contract it out. That would generate about sixty thousand dollar saving and it would not degrade. The accountability that we provide on cases that committed to the town, significant cases are still contracted out, they still would be gross foot-offs, right? Uh, we're looking at rethinking how we do transportation demand management, uh, we would be reducing the division in that. Which we garner about a two hundred thousand dollar saving to look at contracting services. However, we would see. Less capacity to chase after grants, whether it be ETA or others. And so to the extent that it's a reduction in savings, it does also have a long-term potential impact if you can't find an alternative to apply for grants. We would reduce the additional part-time hours for emergency management, thereby relying on full-time position. Our volunteer program would see elimination of support funding, we have a very robust start. An exploring program that has a lot of administrative support. Uh, the support we provide is far in excess of what most cities provide for the volunteer program. So this reduction would eliminate the administrative support of the house. So if we were to continue providing the service. We would need to find an alternate sort of recovery to support the administrative portion of those programs. We would remove the complete funding for the hotel program that was reduced in the earlier tiers. Uh, would also remove funding for the food pantry and shower program that we currently have for the church. Uh, it would reduce the impact and require a reimagining of what we do or visitor marketing services that impact the chamber. It would also result in a significant reduction of part-time hours across. Multiple departments to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars. Those hours go to support library programs, community events, and a return to the front. We'd be reducing additional collections in the library, decreasing our waiting time associated with the pipeline collection ever possible. In terms of, oh, sorry. Thank you. In terms of tree benefit, we'd be having our whole tree pruning program. Uh, this is a contract we entered into about a year ago and so resulted delay of maintenance and. Food toward the emergency tree type maintenance program. We would rest, destructure our Fourth of July event. So that we're reducing overtime due to the dates that are following on a holiday of July fourth. And we would look at leadership Los Gatos, which is the leadership program we offer to the community and to internal staff every year to do that every other year. We would further then reduce staff development and technology, uh, reducing capacity, hopefully, uh, the amount of that. In terms of tier four cuts, which are very severe. While they are severe, we fortunately do not look to reducing filled full-time vision if anyone is here. That one fortunately, uh, developed in a term for public needs. But these would have significant impact on fortress. In terms of the library, front public counter area of the town, we'd be looking at reduction of operating hours so the public's access to us would be impacted. There would be an area of innovation that we would have to look to so that we do the acts of trying to find an alternate way to provide that access in a way that doesn't make this. Community grant funding would be significantly impacted. However, we're going to be having a conversation of the third agenda item of how, what's the direction you want us to take with community grant funding, depending on that direction. Changing what's in the primary budgets to match that with the borough status here in tier four. And then leadership Los Gatos would be removing that program under that tier four. We would also be looking at the impacts that would impact our events. The, our events that are not necessarily just our, but community events that we take pride on, that include our holiday parade events. Would receive a significant amount of support from the town in the form of overtime for traffic control. And contract services through TMI are traffic control consultants or vendors. This may mean that if it's not provided by somebody else other than the town, the advantage may be impacting the field. We do some holiday closures in two areas in the town because of the significant. Uh, volume of people, vehicles, these are not done for a permit, they're done under the abundance of caution of the tax entity. We will not be able to provide that if we go to tier four cuts, except that. Our crossing guard program, which is uh funded, is fifty percent by the town and fifty percent by the school district would be impacted. The ability to continue license plate reading cameras in the vehicles or police department would be impacted. Our ability to broadcast council meetings or commission meetings through a K-CAP channel would be impacted. And so you can tell from all of those were really significant impacts. We had to go that deep. We are not recommending going to that deep for you at least to understand the depth of development. In terms of the revenue side, there's three bill categories of revenue that we can look to. Uh, one is revenue audits. When this, this is either a tax revenue source that we already have, we already have the books. But we don't necessarily do our diligence to ensure all of those who shouldn't be paying are. So some people are following compliant, others are not, we're not necessarily chasing after them, which the audits are intended to identify those that are not. And then to go out there and make sure you pay with, with the desire to have amnesty, give them a chance to come. Up to date without the current penalties after a certain date, current penalty. In terms of the second category, we're looking at sub, reducing subsidies. Subsidies are activities that are being performed that incur a cost to the town. Or which taxpayers are subsidizing an activity that generally has a benefit to an individual or individual group. And so if I came and go building permit and you subsidized it fifty percent, I, person who's building the house. We pay half the true cost of it and the taxpayers will be paying the other half. And so the reduction of subsidies forces those who are benefiting to pay more of the burden and not the tax. And so we've been looking at our fees for the use of various facilities, or field usage fee, that application fee people pay. Rental fees they pay when they use our facilities, the rent fees, and when they use meeting space, meeting space fees. We would reduce subsidized rent and we provide vendors a piece of town property. Many cities offer a low market rent to nonprofits and other organizations to help further. Condition of those nonprofits to serve the private town. Uh, to the extent that we're not able to continue those subsidies, those burdens fall to the organization. We'd be updating the Monteserino law enforcement contract, which we've already done, garnering a little less of about three hundred thousand dollars of. Reduction in the subsidy that taxpayer is paying for that service for Monteserino. And then two other items that are long, the items up till now are shorter term, but can garner a little less than six thirty thousand dollars in savings. But longer term, uh, cost recovery of DUI or special enforcement activity and looking at residential false alarm. Be, being charged when we're arriving or going to a call that's a false alarm, costing uh, impacting services that will divide and also for police. Now, we have vehicle charging stations that we can amend the contracts to ensure more cost recovery. We provided park lifts for downtown citizens, but we don't charge for them. Uh, we have license agreements, the improvement fee by the garage haulers are up. JPA did a fee study that determined the cost of providing services and. Our jurisdiction does not do full cost recovery, the fees that we could, that's one avenue. Uh, new fees for paid parking, I know paid parking is not popular. However, we have both oak meadows in downtown, oak mills next to Vesona where Vesona charges for parking gets impacted because we. Offer free parking application. This is another avenue for increase revenue. Uh, the consideration of a sales or parcel tax, I know the council was considering that last year, but decided not to see with that. That is always an avenue you could pursue, it's just a policy call related to order. And then contracting some of our services to other governmental agencies. We have a fortune of having the ability where we can help other jurisdictions in the services they provide, follow those specifically. And we can help, we can garner a return on that too. So it needs some of our capacity, but then we get a return on the debt. That reduces the cost to the town in providing this concern. In the areas of efficiency and innovation, is this something we need to be doing in the ongoing that's just a regular thing? Internally, we're going to be reviewing key activities and services with what they have ways to be more cost efficient delivery service. There is always opportunities to reduce costs of delivering things smart. And then area of contracts that we do look at key services that we haven't bid. To determine whether bidding would reduce the cost provided of service. And where we could partner with other jurisdictions to do a larger bid across headquarters that should see the partner on the scale. In terms of economic development, looking to where we can invest resources that have a larger return over the longer haul. Where there's a little investment today, but it pays a part, a higher dividend, hoping for some fears for the future. And then the real important one, realigning our core services to what the public desires. And then aligning all that with the available resources so that we have a sustainable model of talent that the revenue is covering the expenses for activity that. We want at the beginning to provide. And so lastly. From the council's perspective, what influence we need, we want you to be able to discuss this information. I know it's a lot, I know it's challenging. Uh, but we want you to advise us at a high level or specifics, we take that to. On how, what you want to garner out of the finance commission, what you want them to look at and advise. And what would you like us to be considering or not considering as we proceed in developing the final budget? And then if you see barriers to being able to make a decision. Whether it be reductions or any action that we would be contemplating in the final budget. Identify those areas where you may need more information. Uh, or something that staff needs to do to allow for a smooth approval of the budget forward to pay. So with that, Mr. Raro, it's your back to the.
Great. Well, thank you for uh, all of the work and really comprehensive view. I don't believe we've had uh, this type of analysis view in our budget process, at least by the council. And I think it's um, very important for council members who are the ultimate decision makers. Uh, to have the kind of information that's available and I especially want to thank. Staff for participating in a very challenging uh process, a very. Thoughtful way understanding uh the character of the town and services that uh staff uh delivers. Uh, I do think that we're a little bit ahead of ourselves by previewing all of this. I think there's always the temptation to go and say, direction should be pursue this or pursue that. And I think I just want to remind folks that it's the council's responsibility to uh. Set policy. On the basis of having, having been elected. And one of the things that preceded this. Was uh, the establishment of a finance commission and the. Uh, the ordinance establishing the finance commission. Uh, requires that the finance commission. Uh, look at the budget and make recommendations before the council can make uh recommendations on the budget. First, council can take spending action anytime. But specifically with the budget process, uh. There's uh, something that's played out and at this stage, the finance commission has not yet engaged in this. Now, why is this important? Because the foundation of information. On which to make recommendations and provide direction is very important. And in my estimation, it has been. Uh, really, we've had inaccurate information in the past. So I know. Town manager, you said attacking the numbers. I feel that we need to get a better understanding of the numbers. And so I'm just gonna start with one question, then I'll let everyone else jump in. Um, and I have quite a few questions about the, the, the. Basis for arriving at the three point seven million dollar deficit. But my first question, just in a nutshell, is how did a projected deficit. Double in one year from one point eight to three point seven million? And more than double in each of the out years in our five-year projection. If I had that wrong, let me know.
Uh, let me stop there, ask me the question. Uh, if you refer to or projected deficit, what was in your. Uh, pro, budget last year, uh, I just want to remind you that that time, they, it is two uh. So if, um, and then be updated, uh. And for you forecast, it moves that information. So I kind of know if he's a recurring thread.
And so your responses, the.
The last, the last time that we, we have the, uh, the impact, uh, it's in the last budget.
And so that was the tune of one point nine million this year.
The, I looked at the estimated change for current year to next year for all the positions approximately to. Or full ability costs, salary benefits, unfunded liability allocation, instability, or something.
So I'm gonna let other council members go and then I would like to back to understanding. Not only how we move from a five-year projection to a new five-year projection that's so different. But how we move from financial reports that were issued just four months ago. Uh, to where we are now that are even more of a difference than that. And so, uh. So anyway, I'm gonna hold back, I want to, because I think we're gonna have to do a little bit of, of the work of the finance. So, um, with that, I'll open it to council members. Uh, would anyone like to start with questions here? Bryce Man.
Thank you. Um, first, uh, piggybacking on Mayor, said at the beginning. I really appreciate this process and it's very helpful for us and, and I hope, you know, and. Maybe pray that we don't have to, to execute on a lot of this, but I think even if this year, you know, we have. Um, a surplus or the budget comes in better than we currently anticipate, I think it's a helpful exercise to. Understand the ways in which um, we, we could, you know, uh, reduce if, if, and potentially wouldn't do so. I think it's helpful. Um, I've lost lots of comments, I'll start with some, some buttons. Um. So I, I guess actually my first question is to a little bit to Mayor's uh question. Do staff currently have a, a level of confidence in the three point seven million dollars figure? Because it, it. Does staff currently have a, a level of confidence in the three point seven million dollars figure? Because it, it, in fairness, it has, you know. Changed um, uh, in years past and I, um, I, I believe that that is the, you know. In the right ballpark, but I think understanding how concrete that number is.
Well, sorry.
I can start. So definitely, our final number will be different. I can doubt sure because this is our best estimate. Uh, they have a vacant position, yes, uh, the vacant position here is steps six is from insurance. If they have a, if they hire a position instead of a lower set. To say they can be simply, if we hire a single person, the insurance costs twenty thousand dollars less, but that is the positions vacant. We cannot assume certain elements. So definitely, we, as the town manager mentioned, we have a conservative assumption. Because uh, once we hire someone, we gotta make sure that we can uh produce a paycheck every second week and you don't have to. Uh, it's something that probably they can say. So definitely, it's a little conservative issue in a way of budgeting, but uh, so it's. The conservative way, it's a little bit more difficult to balance the budget. But they don't have to go in the, during the year, make, make a decision to conserve the services. So for example, the sales tax, uh, property tax number, if we just compare prior year. Uh, last year, if we compare the original budget to a final number, it'll be a million dollar change. If we compare our final budget to the, to the, to our, for uh, final number, it has two hundred thousand. Two hundred thousand, it is how we learn, we learn more. And but in the sales tax, our original sales tax uh was one million dollars higher than our final budget for the final number. So unfortunately, uh, the circumstances are changing. So we go with our best estimate and this year, as the town manager mentioned, we hired a professional form, even from HBR. Uh, for property tax and we go for it, we're still with the copy, the top. Use the company estimate that we opened them and developed a property tax first. So we use that. So uh. We are confident in those numbers, we lose the uh, uh, projection that those are correct as of today. But they, they were assured that it's going to change.
Let me add to that. We currently have seven vacancies. And as the finance director mentioned, when we budget a vacancy, we're budgeting very conservatively. So we have a six, six step salary schedule of five percent. Six steps. We're budgeting at the top, assuming the most experienced person. We're budgeting this, that person has a family, so the likelihood of all of that happening is not a hundred percent. Uh, the other thing, when we're looking at police officer positions, we're making this judgment call. How many of them are classic member, meaning those who have a pension in a pension system pre two thousand thirteen? Versus new people that come to government after two thousand thirteen, they're, they're what they call the pepper of retirement system. The net swing in the dollar amount in the expenses, the last three thousand dollars, any of which were thrown off. And so if there is some flexibility there that you don't fill that position at a top step, then you have a garden statement. However, there are only seven positions. The estimated vacancy savings, the meat for four point six percent and one point nine million, so we could divide the seven. Divided by the one point nine million and garner what average amount of money you get there. And so there'll be some play on the salary benefit side. The piece that you don't have there that completely throws this out of whack. The deficit is much larger than that. If we were running the government efficiently and in the right way, which means you're setting aside money into capital. To address capital improvement needs that you have on an ongoing basis, HVAC carpets, the typical things to maintain. That budget has zero, that's been appropriated. If you then add to the policy that the council wanted to continue and celebrate funding to liabilities, we're not funding any of that except for the four hundred thousand dollars, which is not good. And so what we're doing was represented in a three point seven million dollar deficit budget is we are not contributing taking those. The hope is during the course of the year, the numbers come in better. I know I've seen more recent sales tax information that sales tax probably come in about a hundred, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars higher. Than in this preliminary budget, so the final budget, that number will be higher straight. And then some expenses may come down or may go up, things will adjust. But when you ask the question, how confident are you in the number? I can't be perfectly confident. But I easily see how I can see that number growing if you're doing it correctly or not.
Sure, that's super helpful and it makes a lot of sense. But it's interesting that, that your uh, question about vacancies.
Can I go to council member without you?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that because the question is, um, are you comfortable with that three point seven deficit? So my question is, and then we'll find out Monday night. Has the finance commission, are they in general agreement with the three point seven deficit?
I, I think there are members of the commission that are challenged on our financial projections. Uh, I think rightfully so, the, the projections. Um, if you ask me practically, how do you feel, Chris? You're a finance expert, how do you feel? The town is sitting on a healthy amount of reserves. If three point seven million is actually the number we incur. We can handle that without having to continually cut service. Uh, the real question that I am concerned, certainly keeps me up at night is structuring. The services and promises that we've committed to the community about what we will provide and the cost to provide that. How much money do I need to support that? And if I don't reach that level, which doesn't appear that we are on the long term. How do I right size it? It's the real big, really big question that I just don't have to get through yet.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone on, on line have a question? Council members? Yes, Councilmember Berustow.
Thank you. I won't get into detailed questions right now. I do appreciate the presentation and I also feel like. As we drill down to numbers. At the moment, I'm far less concerned with what the actual number is than the trend. So I think what, I agree with what Chris was saying that. Even if this, this deficit isn't where we are. What concerns me is the trend of where we're going. If you look five years out, that we absolutely know. Without changes, that our, our cost is going up faster than our revenue. Um, what encourages me is that we do have the reserves to kind of cover this. So as we're making decisions. Um, I'm just wondering how much we really need to worry this year. I think we have to look forward. I'm very regretful that we weren't able to move forward with. A revenue enhancement measure in the last election because the other municipalities in Santa Clara County that did that. Were able to um. Pass those measures and are not sitting in the same situation we are. And other municipalities that didn't are looking at this. So um. I guess what I'm. Well. I don't know, I'm having a hard time framing the question I have, but I think. I think as we formulate what we are going to maybe refer to the finance commission who. I seriously doubt will know more than the consultants that we've hired, but you know, they can take another look at the trend. I'd be curious to know how important it's going to be to take strong action this year. If we can look at this deficit and see how the year figures out and then position ourselves for next year and make sure that we. Look at revenue enhancement measures before we ever have to think about tier two, tier three, or tier four. Um, is that? Anything under the scope of what we can be talking about?
Yes.
Yes, it's related to the budget.
Uh, I'll come back to the vice mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so it sounds like, like others. So I have um, specific questions on each of the tiers, so it sounds like we'll get into that uh, later. Um, but another general question I had, so I, I did want to ask a little more about the vacancies. So at. Seven vacancies, you know, I think we have a hundred and fifty one employees or a hundred and fifty three, but I did a hundred and fifty. Um, seven employees out of a hundred and fifty is, is exactly four point six percent, which is interesting. Um, and so my question is, so if we. Are, are we still baking in the four point six percent into the budget? And so if, if that's the case, then if we hire one more person, then we have now gone below what we have budgeted, is that right? We're close to it?
So we are across all the departments, third day. We budget the salaries at the full cost of all position and then a separate line item has a. A negative that reflects the vacancy savings assigned out to each of the department. However, department, department by department. However, when you look at departments. You have some departments that are fully staffed, but you have a vacancy saving, but they may not be able to achieve. And then you have other departments. That have far more vacancy dollar wise. And they're effectively floating the on average townwide for those events. So when you look at the positions. Um, you know, police officer position vacancy is budgeted higher than, let's say, a maintenance worker. And so it, so maybe seven by F, like the number, but not necessarily the dollar value. And we don't track um, full time equivalent. We track positions. And so realistically, a position this year or half year. Is a lesser dollar amount than how we would potentially be projecting your budget that we assume they're all here or not here.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, just one, if the town, even the town plus uh, have any employee a year, no one. We still have to pay conference July five million, so we have to pay that because this is a lot something that we're covered. In addition of the pay. So uh, even if we decrease the number of employees, we have to have a more efficient.
So if I could just follow up on that last point about. My understanding is that in the budget, we budget positions and we budget them. Uh, for the whole year, whether they're part time or full time. And we do a calculation of what that would cost with salary benefits. Um, do we have an accurate report of full time equivalent? Uh, over the past year? Meaning maybe we didn't fill all those roles or some were vacant for a while. Uh, or maybe we had to hire more uh, than the roles that were designated. Do we have a full time equivalent uh, report, an accurate report? Of uh, what, what are full time equivalents uh, were over the last year?
So currently, we don't have the position control, but like we go live during this, they have that to inform to the other board.
No, no. No, you don't, okay, you don't track position to say. They've been here a hundred eighty days instead of out of three hundred sixty five, therefore point five times that equivalent value of your positions. Right now, the cost estimates that I mentioned to you that showed a two point eight million dollar growth from last year to next year. When you look at just the vacant position, which is listing twelve, we don't have twelve, there are seven, but this asset there was. There is four point five million dollars vacancies. Projected and estimated of which, some of them are being filled, so they're really okay, just to get a reflection of like. Swims.
Okay, uh, just to add a comment, it is. My experience in dealing with uh, businesses, my own and others that have faced some tough uh, economic times. Always important to understand what your full time equivalents are because that's really uh, the. The, the main driver of cost. Uh, a lot of the private enterprises as well, this year, I think it's sixty five percent. And so. Uh, I would just say that that's, I think it's very important to have that kind of information. I understand we're waiting for a new system onboard, but this question's been asked a number of times. So. Uh, FTE is critical for making management decisions. Uh. I had some other questions about the numbers before we get to the tier uh, ideas. Is there? Uh, yes. Councilmember ready?
Uh, so mine is really a, a comment for this portion of the discussion. Um, I realize the town manager prefers to not use the vacancy savings as part of the. The forecast and instead ha- have a unallocated fund that money could come from i- if. Um, we need that money, for example. The one thought I had is potentially an alternative. The, the reason in my mind that we originally put this. Four point six percent vacancy savings in was to have a more realistic view of where. Where the real dollar is, is going to be at the end of the year. We know. It, it, I, I've seen this year, year over year over year, the three point seven really represents, in my thinking, staff's. High, high confidence that there won't be larger than this deficit. And in fact, it's going to be something less. Um, we don't really know what the something less is because there's lots of variables that occur. What we did was we took at the time, half, half of our vacancies and said, let's say, we're not, we'll never get around to being able to fill half those vacancies. Some more will, will pop up. So it puts us closer to what reality could be. Um, and so I still like that system, but. We stuck a hard four point six, which actually represented half of the positions. I suggest maybe we want to go to a system. That again gets us to a forecast that's a little closer to what might actually happen. But instead of using a four point six, decide, okay, the beginning of the year, this is the number of, of vacant positions. We will only, uh, uh, to our, at, at our best, we'll only be able to fill half of those, whatever that number happens to be. So now we're down to seven positions. I think you've just mentioned it might have been twelve when we, when we created that. Okay, so we've got a lot less. Positions that might. Um, need to be filled. So the savings is very, it's a lot less likely that we would save a full four point six percent of the budget. What if we adjust in our forecasting of the budget net to be a sliding half of whatever the vacancies are? So that's, that's my comment. Um, I can explain more if that wasn't clear.
Uh, let me just, let me just clarify, the three point seven million dollar deficit. Includes an assumption that we're gonna have four point six percent vacancy. So that we didn't fully fund and not back out the savings. And so if we don't achieve those savings, then the deficit goes up from three point seven million.
Okay, uh, then I misunderstood. I thought somebody asked you that question and you said it wasn't, and I thought I read in the report that it wasn't included, so that wasn't clear.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think the issue really is. That from a position control, we have not restricted the filling of positions. So we went from originally fourteen down to twelve, when we did this estimate. Between one year and the next, now down to seven. And so when you look at that and I look at the number that we're assuming for these positions. The positions that we're filling pretty quickly end up being the higher cost positions and in a critical function. And so I implemented the measure that I implemented in advance of this meeting, partly because I understood. That if we don't take a good look at each of these positions, very activity for both operational and financial and service level impacts. Yes, we could end up in that spot where we have two or three vacancies that garner half billion dollar savings and yet. We're off by one point four million, needing to cut that somewhere else.
My, my thoughts still, um, I, I think it's still the same, whether it's included in the three point seven or not. We should, we should adjust what, what we're using for the savings based on where our, our filled. Unfilled positions sit for the particular year.
Got you. You're, you're saying reallocate, rebalance the allocation to fit the departments where they're actually being incurred, not equally across everybody.
Um, I, from a council perspective, we just thought of it as total savings across all departments and I know it's hard for you to then. You can't spread that like peanut butter across all departments because the savings are not, not the same. Um, so I'll leave that implementation up to you, but from our, but um, our budgeting perspective. I, I think it should be something closer to half of whatever the unfilled vacancies are, won't actually get filled that year. Or they'll get filled, but others will pop up.
Thank you. Um, I had a question, uh, a, a few questions for the uh, finance director. Uh, and I'm referring to uh, the schedule on page eight, which uh, is. General fund, five year forecast. And um, I guess the first question is, the first column starts with proposed budget. Uh, why would uh, twenty three, twenty four actuals and twenty four, twenty five adjusted budget? And twenty four, twenty five estimates be used to generate the budget?
So uh uh unfortunately, this graph it does display. Uh but but we can provide in that information, obviously, the the last year numbers. And the current year uh numbers that provide the the twenty four, twenty five. Uh provide the base of that number. Usually if you're transiting the letter, we can uh drive a revenue history. This this particular table just looks on the.
Okay, so again, from my own experience. In financial management is that. The best predictor for future performance is history. And what we have achieved. And so. And a you know, budgeted decision is about making decisions about the future, but the budget. Requires a grounding in actuals uh and the best grounding is past performance. So. I have. A challenge, understanding. How this budget relates to. Uh our actual uh performance or adjusted budget and the financial reports that we received. Previously, so. You would agree that. That makes sense to look at future performance based on actual performance, right?
Absolutely. And then in the the next step, you can just uh include all that information, including that history. I just want to remind that the budget itself, I don't have a chance to look at it yet. Just to look at the budget. And uh this is all the history, the three year history. Every year, so the financial summary has the information for the the history about that benefit of that part.
I know, Mr. Mary, you're ask- you're asking the lead up years to the projected. You were talking about today would be beneficial to the analysis. Yeah, um I do have the data going back to two thousand fifteen. We can throw up on the board right now if you'd like to see that information.
I don't think we have to take everyone through that, but I did print out the pages from the previous ones. And so. There were a few numbers that jumped out at me that I wanted to ask about. So looking at. Uh let's just talk about the previous five year. Projection. It looks like uh. The franchise fees and the T O T are essentially flat for the next five years. Is that? And and have been flat for the last two. Is that is that correct? And and why is that?
So the D O T uh is uh. It's it's flooded. We talk about the D O T because we don't have a problem. One hotel with one away. So it's factoring in that we actually have a lot less hotel. Most studios and many people on the G R G. Uh the capacity details and that's. That's a pretty good percent uh it's really a strong amount. So. The franchise fees was uh one of the franchises that was a little change. Because the garbage franchise fee was declassified uh after. And after that, the franchise fees were left over with the P G M E franchise fees and Comcast. And it seems to be that the Comcast is one of the increasing because less people using Comcast services. There are more popular streaming services out. So we see a trend, P G M E goes up a little bit, but they are not going with. So that's a start analysis. So that's why.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple more in that vein. Uh town services. Appears to be uh one point six million lower, which is twenty three percent lower. That in our previous projection. So recent for that.
Uh the town services includes all of the fast two uh development activities. So if the department uh in certain year have a bigger permitting activity, it might uh. Pay the numbers. So if I can get the valuation because even our current forecast, the. Fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six is higher than you have projected. The following year. So it's 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 really uh most of things are dependent on. Current uh permit activities. Those staff services are really. Just did I buy that too? So it's maybe uh just the trend might be different.
Okay, I had two more that are related to that. And this maybe is the whole thing that goes to the finance. Mission that uh I'm looking at on the expense side. Uh salary is uh one point six million higher, which is seven percent. Is that in line with uh the labor contract?
So the labor contract, the the boy he does at twenty five, thirty six. Also twenty five, twenty six, the G A tax confidential management. About the three percent increase, E O A five percent and the S two is four percent. And the the medical benefit of uh international last focus of the salaries. And that's that's just the base increase. And if uh someone is not on top step, there is a step increase. So that's uh that's with the stepping increases and all the.
Okay, so that that's a substantial part of the deficit. So. Uh I I you know, I'm seeing a difference of one point six million, which is seven percent higher salary. From the previous projection. So sounds like there may be. The difference between what you're saying in the labor contracts is here. So this is. An area that I think would be valuable for the finance. And then uh oh, the last one I have, actually two more, uh operating expenditures. That seems to be two million higher in uh the. Uh proposed budget, which is about a ten percent increase. Uh is there a reason for that?
May I come here and request you what budget, uh what forecast are you comparing to? When you uh cited differences?
So I'm taking the. Uh general fund five year forecast. Which was this year and I'm pairing that to. The general fund five year forecast, which was last year. And I'm focusing on the same fiscal year column. So I've seen a. Uh in this case. The two million dollar difference.
Uh so uh.
I see for the twenty four, twenty five. Sorry, twenty five, twenty six budget, eight point three million. And I've seen on this uh projection of ten point three million. So that's two million.
I have to look at all the numbers once you're.
I will note that if you go back two more years on the five year projections. That number is ten point three million back then.
Oh, I understand. Uh but uh again, we were working with a forecast and. Um and then the last one I have is on internal uh service charges and. Uh I again, I'm seeing. Historical uh expenditures of three point two million and now five million.
So I can, I can speak to that. Uh the internal service uh especially to area. Uh the general liability, the head worker proposition, we had to increase uh charges for department twice. Because there was not sufficient fund providing services, mainly for for experience. And the insurance premium uh went up. So it was a significant increase. Last fiscal years, it required a deposit on her. Transfer to. A general liability fund. And this year we are requesting. So we significantly have to increase the rates, but the government are paying to keep those on the board.
So I just focused on some of the bigger numbers. Uh so you know. Uh that's a three point million dollar increase, operating expenditures, two million. Salary one point six. And then on the revenue side. Uh one point six million uh lower services. So uh. Illustrate these because we need to have really good information. On why I think the budget. Uh is projecting what it is based on. What our previous projection was. And then I won't even go into. My attempt to reconcile the act for. To budget, but those numbers were even bigger when I tried to do that. And. I understand that this is um government fund. So I try to focus on. Parts of the act for, but this is an area that I think would be very valuable to. Understand because the swing from the act for that we just looked at four months ago. To what we see in the budget is substantially even more than the numbers that I put out. So it'd be good to get that understanding.
The consolidation of the factor, uh because we. Uh so we we make sure that all of the information.
I think you're asking, when we go to finance mission, be ready to talk about change. Now, we're to have finance mission is much more talented than I am at this. Have a look at it and say, yeah, this makes sense because to me, and just doing my. Calculation, it doesn't quite make sense.
And you use last year. Forecast from the budget.
Uh I use last year general fund five year forecast, page eighty nine.
Thank you.
Uh other questions?
Um so I have a question about a few specifics. So if tier for tier one, I just wanted to ask, have the commissions been consulted or briefed at all about the? National permitting of budgets?
That would be appropriate to go to the commission for.
Okay, um uh so I would just say on that one, I I think it would be appropriate to at their next meetings. Let the commissions know that this is being talked about, especially because, you know, I I don't know what they're planning necessarily, but. Um uh I think that's important for them to know. And then also, if that's the direction we go, um. I think it'd be important to consult with the commissions about what sorts of things they would want to give away. Um so al- also in tier one, besides the commission budgets, can you talk through just like one level more detail? How you're getting to the much larger deficit reduction number?
Yeah, we can do it. There's. So a lot of it asks you if there are certain hard time temporary hours that are having been developed or aren't built. So we're looking at those more critically, looking at other efficiencies that we can have, you know. Uh could we do this more efficiently? Could we cut back? Could we do this better? A lot of those types of efficiencies, a lot of which were in post budget and we went back and found some more.
Okay, that's great. So so things that in general, you don't think will be super felt?
No, that's why we put them in tier one and we fully expected tier one to happen. So we're prepared.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on what the vice mayor brought up. Um you're bringing in the commissioners and the commission. As to a drop in their budget. But I don't remember them having budgets in prior years. This is something new anyway. So uh I I don't see it as being so important because it's something we never offered in the past. So taking it away when we have some extreme budget cuts, I'm not as concerned about that, but. We'll talk about that later.
I would just show that one comment on that is that. I think it's very premature to break that conversation to uh the missions. Uh I think that that is something that would. You know, maybe take place as we get closer to adopting a budget and understanding what the implications are of the things that we. Are booked to do as a council, but I uh I think that there's. Enough of a disparity of view about whether the numbers are. Substantial to take those actions and whether those are the actions we should take. So just.
I think that's fair. Yeah, yeah. I I think I just on that, I I think it'll be if if this does come to pass, getting there.
Council member Risto.
Thank you. Um yeah, tier one is pretty um basic, I think. There were some issues from other tiers that I thought we could bring forward if we had to, once we understand the numbers. But one concern I have, not a concern, one, one thing that was brought up that's already been implemented. Is um that any vacancies may or may not be filled right now, that they need justification. And the only concern I have is that um they're primarily in one department. And these are positions that the council has authorized. So I don't know what. I don't know what the implications are for that. I mean, from a policy perspective. Have we decided to scale back police officers if those positions aren't going to be filled? Because um I think most of those um vacancies are in the police department, correct?
Uh probably have.
Okay, so. You know, I'm just concerned about, you know, if if those positions have to be further justified. Does, will the council know which positions may or may not be authorized or what the implications would be?
Well, first of all, we just authorized hiring three police officers. So I don't know where the information about we froze the positions. I mean, it's very clear we have not frozen positions. Secondly, justification, council, I have the municipal code obligation. To watch out for the budget for the town. You implemented a five point, four point six percent vacancy savings. So if you're telling me. Fill all positions, I'll be doing it counter to your authorization of vacancy saving. So I have to be careful. When folks come forth, be diligent. So I would, I would, I would expect the council is appreciative that. We're diligent in evaluating it. We've not set a hard known anything.
Okay, those are both great points. I didn't use the word freezing. Um and I know that it said we're not freezing the positions. Also, you know, I realize it's the will of the council as a whole. I was opposed to that four point six percent vacancy savings. Because the whole discussion was, well, that's not really going to freeze the positions. If we have to fill a position, we'll do that. It's just a number. And now it seems to be coming true that that might actually be part of our budget. So. Um I just have a question about that.
Yeah, I think I'll go back to what I advise the council really early on. A vacancy savings is a good projection, but it's also an indicator of fiscal distress. If you're relying upon a vacancy savings. You know, there's one school of thought that you want to be more precise to leave more resources for other things in the year. But you also could take the other school of thought, which is whatever your vacancy savings are in year one, it's a hard. Dollar amount in year two that you can use one time for anything. And so when you're baking in a vacancy saving, yet have no personnel control. You're basically leaving yourself at the device is assuming that is just going to work itself out. Well, I can tell you, when you're offering, offering uh hiring bonuses and incentives. For folks to recruit and bring on board, we do a remarkably good job of recruiting and filling positions. And when you end up filling all the positions, it will be the council asking the manager. Why in your right mind would you not have been diligent to ensure that if we were getting close to fiscally impacting the budget? You would have told us something. So the whole point would be if we're getting to that critical red line where really decisions have to be made. I would then trigger it coming to council and council will be able to advise me, how do you want to approach this situation? Because I have the obligation to make sure we need appropriation authority that you grant.
Okay, thank you. And then my follow up comment would be, this is why I'm opposed to baking in a vacancy savings. Because whichever department is down is the one that could potentially suffer. And I think it makes a lot more sense. And I think it makes a lot more sense to assume if we're doing our best job to hire all positions. We should aspire to that, and at the end of the year, if we haven't and we have savings, that can, you know, we're. We'll have the same, we'll be offset by one year, but I think that's a much safer thing and we're um. Hiring at a level that we've wanted, so. I mean, I guess we'll have to figure out if we're going to move forward with vacancy savings later or not, but that does put some constraints on the manager.
No, but you but also when we're looking at vacancy, we also have to look at service, so I think I think what you're. What you're saying is, are we negatively impacting operations of one? Unnecessary, and so that's a consideration I would take into fill a position. Right now, we have to understand our latest reports, our response times are fantastic. Our committee survey that very data shows very high regard for that operation. And overtime hours are an overtime consideration that are not close to other jurisdictions. I mean, we got to look at all of that before we say. Fill everything everywhere, and then we're scrambling to find out where do we take? One point eight million, which is the vacancy savings, if we're not going to achieve it in a year, where do they come from? It will come from reserves, and if we're already projecting next year, fully expending almost all the unassigned fund balance. If I now add one point eight million or some component to that. From this year, you could see that we would expend the unassigned fund balance and then be looking at contingency reserves or budget stabilization. For some other accounts to take that money to balance the budget, which I I think puts us in a really bad spot going forward.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, vice mayor.
So I had a few other questions about tier two, um a couple of specifics in there, so um do we, so this is a. One that I just don't know what this is, what is the decorative tree wrap like?
On Santa tree, you said you used to make a few uh trees wrapped in like.
Oh, just like a string ones? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And and so what is, do you know like an approximate split between decorative tree lighting and power washing?
I I can't even tell. It's about, you know, roughly seventy thousand for the decorative lighting, roughly thirty six thousand for the power washing.
Okay, so again, sorry to get so specific on this, do we, why does that cost seventy dollars?
Because they are challenging ones. It's very hard to be to be none, people around the tree, they rip the light off, the tree grows, the lights turn off. Um the electrical service is quite old to those as well. We would recommend that if we're cheap, that we should. Probably consider a concrete to that system. So for all of those reasons, they're very challenging.
Got it. That's very helpful, thank you. One other one I had in that sort of space is um on the the fountain, so the the tier two, and I know all of the things in tier two. But you know, again, hopefully don't come to bask, but as recommended, does the fountains uh? Recommendation is that turn off the fountains all the time year round?
It is, it is, and I we left twenty percent in because I think we would be still need to exercise the office on occasion. In order to not lose that. So which is why it did go to a hundred percent reduction, but we are, as the town manager noted earlier, the plaza, the fountain is down at Plaza right now. And we are working through the cost upgrade, but it looks like we need to replace the treatment system, the ultraviolet water treatment system. So that's gonna be a cost that we need to discuss at some point soon, but that's not the.
But in terms of of an event, maybe this is one of those where, yes, we shut it off regardless of savings. At any point in time, it's not, you start it up again, doesn't have a huge startup cost, so we both sign the resources. Go back to turning it off.
Okay, yeah, and I I have some comments on the uh some of these things that that I can share. Last question on on tier two was um regarding the library um. That some of those recommendations seem to be pretty significant, so I'm I'm wondering if y'all have thought into. Which of those are sort of best and worst bang for your buck? So you know, something like audiobooks, my understanding is pretty well utilized, and so cutting audiobooks is probably, you know, a bigger. Cut than quarterly brochures, um and so have you all put thought into disaggregating any of those? Of which, you know, the library would would prefer keeping over others?
Yes, so within a tier, like if you were to look at my backend of what I put in, say, tier two. I've got my rankings of that, so I've got something higher than another, some of them are like, oh, so tier three, I'm right there, right, but there's something in tier two. Some of them are like, yeah, I think like. So uh so yes, within uh breaking everything down, because I mean, we have fifty eight on all this, right? But getting it into four tiers method, something could come together, so we take it as a whole tier. I would capture that they they captured everything in there, if you were to say like that, do half of it, half of it here, right, and I type it up.
Okay.
And staff was very involved and taking a look at the resource that the people use, how often they use, I mean, what the impact is going to be. Uh some things were says like a fifteen percent cut to our collections budget. That's going to be really done, that would be done with my librarian staff really looking at, okay, it's going to be a little bit out of this area, not so much out of this area. It's going to be um a very white blood process to make sure that we take that cut in such a way that. It still represents the community the highest success can, it's not.
Could be searchable. Yeah, that's great. I'm I'm I am glad to hear that. That's that's good.
Other questions? Council member Anna.
I have one question and several comments, if you want me to go with the comments also. Um I'll start with the the question, uh uh again, it was for library. In tier four, you have cutting of hours, but in the earlier tiers, you have cutting of. What what you just discussed, um different supplies and things for the library. I would have placed it in the opposite order that we'd want to have. The best setup library, but maybe, you know, hours that aren't used as much, we. We reduce to save money, so I would have put it maybe in an opposite order. Could you talk a little bit? You know, have you, this I this must be obviously the library staff's thought of the order and, you know, have you? Discuss this with the users and enlighten me a little more on on why you chose to put this in tier four versus. Is the other other items that are in the earlier tiers?
Yeah, you have a great question. So we say hours that actually. So we were seven day a week operation, um so when we're going to start cutting our our hours. It means that we would probably close on to make it a six day a week operation or a five day a week operation. Um and that's because we're super heavily reliant on our part time staff to make sure that we have enough coverage. To do seven day a week operations, as we start to pull back on those different tiers, when we hit that tier three. That's when my part time hours bank, that starts to starts to get really low. When it says we're going to lose hours, meaning days at the library of operation, it's because I have no more part time hour bank. So my my part time hour bank disappears completely, since I don't have a part time hour bank anymore, I can't do seven days of the operation. So that's why it looks like that, um those hours banked for part time staff and the days of operation are are intertwined, I can't really pull them apart. Which is why.
Okay. All right, okay, I think I understand now. Um one. To um comment I had, um I guess going back to the budget, I had made the note and didn't see it before. Uh regarding measure G, the current budgets are now assuming all of measure G is going into operating and not into capital, that's correct?
Yes.
And we we the council, I thought we kind of did a resolution, we certainly did a vote. To split fifty fifty between capital and and operating because that's what. The measure talked about that that got passed, and I thought I was a strong proponent of that for two reasons. One, we need to get money into our capital. We were telling us now we have plenty there for a while for what we can actually. Manage, but at some point, we're going to need to be able to get money into our capital budget. Um so that was a a source of money that went into capital budget, saying we always would put half in of measure G. A a source of discretionary capital, because otherwise it has to be budget surpluses, which we seem to be struggling to have in the future. Um the second piece of it was, that's what we described to the voters that we would be doing these. You know, we named certain capital projects, keeping the the potholes of the street and so forth and so forth, and we named, we would. Keep our police force operating and and so forth, so. My feeling is if we're going to change. The measure G allocation, since we had a vote at the council, every year that we don't do what we voted for. The council should have a specific vote somewhere that says, yes, this year we will take the exception of of not doing. What was in the plan. Um is there any comment from finance or town manager on that?
I can start to comment on that, uh that's what have the staff planned to bring the bring forward a resolution. Uh as it goes for this discussion, uh if because if this is the council wish to transfer it to the capital. That's that's uh a little bit over six hundred thousand dollars on stewardship. So yes, we would we would bring it forward for pass or for direction.
Okay, that that's just the proletarian in me that says it's more, you know, I didn't want it to just kind of get washed under the rug that. We should make an active choice to change it at least yearly or for permanent kind of thing.
I know that there was a two thousand eighteen resolution, but the sales tax, but it was a general sales tax, correct?
It it was, it was not a specific sales tax, but I like to stay true to what we told our voters that we were going to do with the money. So we aren't tied to doing specific things with it. But the council voted to do this split, so we stayed more true to what we said we were going to do with the money.
Okay, yeah, just, yeah, the intent was never to just do the budgeting and not change the resolution. Uh because this is just the preliminary budget, but the council decided, no, don't want to do that. So there's no you, you know, no, he's changing the resolution only to reverse it back to fifty fifty.
Okay, yeah, I just just wanted to point out that I'd like to see it a little more formal with a vote or something like that, or. Or called out in the total budget vote or something like that. Um other comments I had on on various tiers, we we just mentioned the. The power washing, I I'm okay probably eliminating the lights, I don't know that we need them all year round. They're hard to maintain, maybe there's an option that's cheaper. I don't know how much they add, I mean, it's nice at Christmas time. But we tend to put other lights up also at Christmas time, and it's a fairly big number, so I'm I'm okay if we decide to go that way. Power washing, I'm a little more concerned about. Um if you eliminate power washing, I think we're going to hear about it pretty quickly. We, the last time we were saving money when I was first on the council, that's one of the things we did had done was. Reduce the amount of time power washing, number of times power washing was done. And we got complaints that it wasn't enough, and then so eliminate, it seems to be saying eliminate completely, I I think is a mistake. And I think that should be probably a further down tier kind of thing uh of the power washing and to bifurcate that item into the two. Pieces. Somewhere it mentions charging for the parklets, I wanted to comment on that. My understanding is that parklets are about to get hit or have been hit by property tax now. Um so I I don't want to double up the pain um at at one time, I don't know when. You know, if they've started paying the property tax or where where that is in the process, I know that's been talked about for more than a year now, so I would. Want to be careful about, all of a sudden, now they have to pay a property tax on the parklet. And then we also add a charge on top of that, if we do decide we need revenue desperately. Let's spread that out from that in, you know, effectively an increased cost of usage. Out from the other increased cost of usage, if that makes any sense. Um another thing I wanted to bring up, um it's mentioned in tier three, the um. Uh changing the attorney. I need to say being the same, you know, when we assigned, when we created that. Did did you miss part of what I said?
Yeah, we missed the first two sentences.
Sorry, the internet is a little bit unstable. Um so on tier three, we talking about changing the attorney. Review of the police issues to the town manager's office, and I was saying, I think that might be something we want to pull in earlier than tier three. For other, it had its savings, but for other operational reasons, when we created this and assigned it to town attorney, there wasn't nearly as much land use. Attorney time, and now I foresee for at least the next couple of years. It might be a good idea to unload this from the attorney. Um so that that office, she in that office can, you know, focus more on on the land, the many land use issues that are kind of. New and an extra load to the traditional Los Gatos town attorney load. I don't know if you have any comment on that, that's just my thought there, pulling that in, and maybe others want to say something. Another idea I had, one last one, and then I'll I'll um stop for now. Um we mentioned, I don't remember which tier, um about reducing or maybe even stopping tree pruning. One idea I had is maybe we can start sooner to change the expectation that. That the homeowners do some maintenance of of the street trees, I know certain trees are kind of beyond homeowner. If you've got a huge oak tree that's a hundred feet tall, that doesn't work so well, but I remember when I first moved on to Pinehurst, I had. A street tree that every year grows very fast, and I had no idea the town took care of the trees, I said, well, it's in front of my house, I have to take care of it. So every year I would trim it back, um some of the fast growing pieces, and then probably three years in, the town came by and trimmed it. I said, wow, that's really nice of the town, they trimmed my tree for me. But maybe we want, you know, if if we're really getting to the point our budget is is, you know, in stress, we. Sent out a note to people saying, you know, the town will buy, be by less often to trim the trees. Um Pete, please, please feel free to trim your own trees, you know, do something that allows and maybe encourages that. So it reduces our load a little bit, maybe we even create a flyer on how to trim trees or which trees. Are are more trimmable than others, for example, so that's that's another idea. I'll I'll stop now, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh anybody in the room?
Yeah, vice mayor, and then we'll go to council members. Thank you, Eric. Yeah, so I'll I'll also provide um uh some of my comments, and I, you know, again. Cautch in the fact this is all preliminary, um but I think it's it's helpful to staff for you all to understand our our thinking, so. Um again, assuming the deficit is isn't bad, it's that we predict there's some portion of that, I do think it'll be important on tier one to. Directly consult with commissions, get their reactions, and then also understand, you know, uh give them the option to to put away. So for tier two, um some of the things that that I I could support are reducing hours for emergency coordinator. Reducing some of our outside legal services and removing doggy bags in the parks, although I'd be, I would be interested in. If people in the neighborhood, especially people that live near the parks, might be interested in, you know, if we told them that, maybe them. Some of them want to pitch in and contribute um uh to their neighborhood uh doggy bags. Um I, again, to the library, I I can support, you know, some level of the tier two proposed library cuts. But I'd be interested in hearing, you know, a better breakdown of what's closer to tier three and and trying to just stay away from some of those things. Again, I like, I I know people who use the thing, some of the things that are outlined here, and and not for others, so. And then uh. Yeah, and then reductions in training and membership, if that makes sense, so some some of the things that that I'm not. Um enthusiastic about supporting at this time are removing the portable restroom, I think this is, you know, this. This was funded and and it's sort of outlined as a, you know, unhoused benefit, but I have seen it be a real community benefit. I think a lot of people use the downtown restroom, and I think it's been been received well, and especially given the fact that we're looking at, you know, more difficult. Budget times, I I'm not getting the sense that we're going to be building the the permanent public restroom in the near term. And so I think preserving the the downtown restroom uh would be a good thing. Um I'm also, this, you know, maybe this is just a me thing, turning off the the Plaza Park fountain during the summer makes me so sad. Um I played in that as a little kid, and and I know you go down there in the summer during the farmers markets, there's tons of kids running through that fountain. I, you know, unless I I could be convinced this is a huge, huge savings, I I don't think that that's. um, uh, one of the places to look. I I think Pacific Center Fountain is is much, you know, less used, so I think that that's less important. The Plaza Park, um, I feel strongly about. I would not be enthusiastic about cutting the hotel program. Um, although I'd be much more supportive of cutting, you know, eight thousand or so dollars from it than than, you know, gutting it completely. Um, and and yeah, that's what I have on on tier two. And then, um, won't go through all of them for for two, three, or four, but, um, uh, I agree with, um, what Councilman Rennie said about um, reorganizing the complaint structure with the town attorney's office. I think that that makes sense. I think that um, our town attorney is, we're asking a lot of her right now, so I think that that makes sense. Um, a few things that I would definitely not support are reducing funding for certain dark mother volunteer leasing and emergency response programs. I think those are really, in my view, those are really good bang for your buck programs, where we're getting a lot out of volunteers who are really capable of event disaster. Um, and I would not support producing the town's homelessness funding beyond uh, that I, the the what's outlined in here too. Um, and, yeah, and I and I, and when it comes to tier where I don't think we're preparing.
Okay, thank you. I'll put it with Natalie before we go. Councilmember Risto.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm in general alignment with the recommendations made by staff. Um, thank you all the directors for your input. It it all makes terrific sense. Tier one and tier two, so I support those. Um, I also agree with dipping into tier three and reorganizing, uh, community police complaints and kind of alleviating some of the workload for our town attorney that is faced with a lot of management issues that we have never had before. So that makes good sense to me as well. I I'm not sure I support, uh, the Vice Mayor's consulting with the commission on the twenty five hundred dollar budget cuts. We've never had twenty five hundred dollars for commissioners, their appointed positions, they're just advisors to the town. I don't believe it's within their purview uh, to be consulted on budget issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I I think there were a lot of good ideas there. If I'm going to look at, you know, we're only really talking about tier one and then what might we want to move to tier one. And so I'm in definite agreement about, um, reorganizing the process for community police complaints. I think that makes great sense. It'll save time for our town attorney. It'll probably save time by the, from the police officers because they won't have to spend as much time walking through each of, um, each of these complaints when they come in, and that's a substantial savings, not just in money but time. Um, under tier three, the other things that I would consider moving up sooner, if not immediately, would be, um, you know, we've reinstated leadership Los Gatos since the pandemic. And I would vouch for that as an incredibly valuable program. Um, I think most council members have taken it, and a lot of community leaders have come out of there. Um, however, maybe going to every other year, it wouldn't be as hard to recruit people for it. I don't know. I guess I'd want some input ultimately from community development director or someone. If it's not happening every year, will it lose momentum? Um, will there be an extra cost to getting it geared up every other year? Or is it a straight line item? And would it be hard to recruit people? So I'd be curious about that. But it seems like that would be a place where we could save. And then the other thing is I have no problem moving the town's Fourth of July event to a weekend. Plenty of other communities do that. I think if that reduces the cost of it, you know, just set it for the Sunday of July fourth weekend. And, um, you know, I don't know if we could do that this summer, but I would move that up from tier three to soon. And then going back to the commission, um, allocations, I think when we did decide to give each commission twenty five hundred dollars um, to spend on events or things, that was kind of an open idea. It was new. Um, I do think that takes up a lot of staff time, and not all the commissions are using those budgets. And if it's primarily for um, promotions or giveaways, it makes a ton of sense just to have that consolidated, all the commissions giving out the same thing so that it's more uniform town swag or, you know, tchotchkes or whatever. And where I would consult the commission is when staff is deciding, okay, these are the things we'd like to give out. Have the commissions weigh in on that. Not weigh in on whether they get the twenty five hundred or not, but weigh in on what those items that all commissions will have in common, if there's some choice there. And let me see, the tree trimming, the thought I had was if and when we do have to cut back on tree trimming, you know, as Councilmember Rennie pointed out, and I think we've done our own tree trimming on our street trees sometimes, and I have neighbors that do it because their street trees are under PG&E lines, and they're not happy with the job PG&E was doing. So they were trimming their own trees. Maybe we set up some incentive where we have approved arborists for the town and even partnering. So, you know, you could save half the cost, where we say we're coming in to do this block. You know, people can either trim their own tree or, you know, pay part of it. Those are options. I don't know. That might create more work for staff than not doing it. And then going to the porta potty, I agree, that didn't even really start under the unhoused program. It is a benefit to our unhoused, but it's also was done because our nearby coffee shops are just absolutely overburdened with people needing a public restroom. And I walk by that porta potty because I walk through the plaza multiple times a day. And there's often moms and kids and runners and other people using that porta potty. So I would want to think hard about that because it was there to solve a problem, and given that that was a bridge until we got the permanent restroom put in in the plaza. Um, I would hate to just discontinue it and leave people with nothing because that is fairly unwelcoming to visitors. And it's really harsh for the local businesses who then have desperate people running in to use the restroom. So that's my thought right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Rennie, and then I'll make a few comments, but we'll try to move on to the next item.
Yeah, I'll just quickly, um, finish. I, you know, I mentioned some of the the special items. I'd say generally I'm in agreement with the tier two items. I think I'm in alignment with most of the comments, uh, Councilmember Risco just made about the commissions. I agree with her. Leadership Los Gatos, I agree with her. Fourth of July, I agree with her. The porta potty, I agree with her. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. No, I was gonna just wrap up the Q that one. I I just wanted to comment really quickly, revenue, because we talked about that at all. Um, uh, I I think it's great, all of the things that y'all are thinking about. I think, you know, we you've shared that before, that we can't, you know, just be cutting. I think it's important to to be thinking about revenue. So I think that's great. I think audits is a really good idea. Um, I I just, I've shared two quick things. One, I think we have to be careful. This is maybe a, uh, use a specific example for a general comment. When we're talking about something, and I know we're not, you know, recommending all of these things at this time, but something like say, saving forty five hundred dollars by increasing fees for events, I don't think that's a good bang for your buck, where you're making it harder for people to do things in the community, and we're not really getting along. So I think we do have to be careful. Just because something is is easy to cut doesn't mean we we should. Um, and then, uh, uh, when we talk, the the, you know, elf in the room or whatever on on revenue being, uh, revenue measures, um, the the thing that that I really do think that that Los Gatos really should put some time into exploring, um, we can talk more about this another time, but we, you know, we we talk about a sales tax or a parcel tax, and those, I think, are really the only sort of taxes we talk about. Um, but Palo Alto, two years ago, they, um, modified their business tax, um, to uh, to tax their largest corporations to get them to contribute more to our community, which is something I care a lot about, being that we have a very large corporation in our community, was um, historically hasn't, you know, been a great community partner the way Apple or Google has. Um, and so what Palo Alto did is for the first ten thousand square feet occupied by a business in their city, no taxes levy. And then for the next, for each next square foot occupied by a business over ten thousand square feet, um, there's a monthly tax of seven point five cents, um, per square foot. And and I really think that that would be something, A, more palatable to our community members. I think it's it's, you know, not hard to pass a tax that that doesn't affect people that are voting on it. Um, or mostly people that are voting on it. So I, as we're, if if we go down that path, I really think it's worth looking at being creative rather than just sales tax.
Okay. Um, I have a few comments. Uh, I'm I'm not going to be commenting on the tier one, two, three, or at this time, because I think it's premature. Uh, I think that, as I mentioned before, when I look at a budget, the grounding for the budget is past performance. And, um, with the reports that I have, I can't reconcile the current presentation to the most recent financial reports that just came out a long time ago. And I can't tie them to the projections of a year ago. And the answers that I've received today uh, do not demonstrate to be the financial foundation for taking the kind of actions, uh, at this time. Um, I will be fully prepared to do that at the right time. Uh, but I also want to kind of remind folks that um, we are, yes, we're being asked to provide some direction to the Finance Commission. But there's an ordinance that says that Finance Commission's comments and recommendations shall include a recommendation about whether the town council should approve or disapprove of proposed budget. And the town manager must provide the budget to the Finance Commission at least twenty days before the first meeting, at which the proposed budget is considered by the council. And I don't think this has been done. So I think it's inappropriate for the council to be considering the budgeting this time. And I think the reason that this was, this process was established, uh, why there was an overwhelming vote for Finance Commission is to draw on the expertise that we have uh, of our appointed residents, uh, because some of the council, and especially myself, do not possess the financial skills necessary to understand and challenge the financial foundation upon which budget decisions uh, must be made. And so, uh, those, so I will provide some direction at this point. Um, my view is that the Finance Commission needs to understand the financial foundation of the budget, including revenue and expense assumptions, and evaluate them with respect to the act for financial statements of the current year and the adjusted budgets of the current year. And number two, to evaluate the potential financial impact, not policy impact, of three things, revenue enhancements, cost controls and savings, and three process improvements and efficiencies that might be identified by staff. Uh, asking three questions about it. Uh, first of all, how much would they yield? How soon? And how sure are we of the possibility of, uh, receiving, uh, that benefit? And so, um, that would be my direction at this time is to uh, continue a great process that's been started. Um, but to, uh, to engage our Finance Commission in an effective way, uh, not in a policy way of deciding which, uh, items to, uh, to do relative to the residents uh, desires, but rather which ones will have impact on the finances of the community. So, um, those are kind of my comments. I think everyone has had a chance. Vice Mayor, if you want to, we can go ahead, and then we're going to take a recess.
Okay, yeah, um, sounds good. Thank you. Bio break. I I I just, um, you know, uh, that is, uh, you know, a significant statement, so I think it's important for you to chime in. So I I I disagree, um, with the assertion that we have not followed the resolution. I think that this is a super, super valuable process that I think will be a benefit to the whole community. I think we are providing budget direction, and this was known as a pre-budget discussion. So um, being that the council is ultimately responsible for the budget of the town, I think it's super valuable, especially when we're in a potentially constrained budget environment for the council to have the opportunity to weigh in in this way. And so, uh, I'm I'm super appreciative of this process and would support doing things like this.
Okay, terrific. Um, so I will close, uh, item one. And we'll take a ten minute break, and then we'll go to item two. Thank you. No, I'm. Okay. So we will resume our study session with item number two. And this is to receive a proposed capital improvement program and provide direction. But it's Christian.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I have a presentation that should be coming up. And I will just say that I'm, while I am the one presenting this, pretty much everyone else is true. It's had a hand in it in some way, shape, or form. It's participated in a project, has supported a description of a project, or developed a project. So I'm just gifted with the presentation. So here we go. We're going to, I'm going to take you through just the intent of the capital program, the changes in funding that we propose, that how we tiered the project, the Town Manager mentioned that earlier, and we'll describe that a little bit, talk you through it. And also talking through some projects, specific changes that were, that are implemented. And, you know what? Oh, did it go? And as you noted, we are looking for feedback to, to give to the Finance Commission, provide direction to Finance Commission to review the proposed plan. So what is the intent of the capital improvement program? It does support, we believe, the goals, the core goals of the town of good governance and visibility. With this year's plan, you'll see some pretty significant changes, taking our first steps toward ensuring improved financial management and working our way eventually toward a fully funded five-year capital improvement plan. This does start to build also on prior work that we've discussed with you. The mayor called me to the study session back in November, where we talked about deferred capital improvement programs, lifecycle, cost assets, and the like. So we continue to work on that and delve that out. So what does the capital improvement program do? It is working to effectively manage the assets of the town, of which there are a number. We have seventeen parks and open spaces consisting of two hundred and twenty-three acres, one hundred and thirteen miles of road. I won't read you all this. Twelve buildings, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand square feet. That is what, all of this that's on this slide, it's what the thirty-five FTEs of Parks and Forest Works are tasked with maintaining and managing. So what are some of the changes in the CIP this year? It is a four-point-nine-million-dollar CIP, which is considerably smaller than what you've seen in previous years. And we did that by doing a couple of things. One is, we did close or complete or consolidate fourteen different projects. So that was a large number for us. There are fifty-one projects that were already in the CIP that remained after we closed those fourteen. We catalogued those into tiers, and I'll go through those tiers. But the tier organization is what allowed us to reduce the overall dollar value of the CIP, the proposed CIP. And as you discussed during item number one, we did eliminate them to transfer from Metro G to this proposed budget. So let's describe tier one, tier two, tier three. So if a project was in of the prior capital improvement program that you adopted last year, it is either a tier one or tier two project. And it remains in the proposed budget book that you received from the, from the Finance Director. They are, all of those projects are listed in attachment one of your staff report with their associated tier. We also have a list of other known needs. That is, we call tier three projects. And that is included as an attachment to the staff report in attachment two. You saw that list in your study session in November. We'll run through the big, the numbers of it at the end. But tier, how did we decide what's a tier one or a tier two project? I assure you, this wasn't. There are some projects that are dear to my heart that I got moved to tier two. It was, it was painful for me. I suspect some of you may find it painful as well when you see what was moved to tier two, but we really feel like it was necessary. So tier one projects are the projects that were identified as either being in progress, grant-funded, or where substantial progress is expected in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The idea is, we're going to focus light of lasers on those tier one projects as staff, and my team will focus on their delivery. And then, as time permits and staff resources allow, we will move into tier two projects. The tier two projects are all the remaining projects that were in the prior CIPs, that was in the prior CIPs. So we ended up with thirty-seven tier one projects, which sounds like a lot. But five or six of them are IT projects, some of them are emergency preparedness. So there's, there are a host of things across the board. It's not just, not all just roadways and stuff that falls into my team. We also further divided the tier two, recognizing that we are effectively with this budget putting tier two projects on hold. We categorized them into, into classes just to give you some idea of the priority that we might choose to move them forward. So in attachment one of the staff report, you can see for the tier two projects, you can see which classes they are in. And this whole program and this whole proposal really is intended to just recognize that our staffing levels are extremely limited when it comes to delivering capital improvement projects. We have two capital improvement engineers, one of whom has been refocused into an development work to support the large number of applications that we have. So we are essentially running a lot of our CIP program right now. It's not to complain or cry, it's just a statement of fact. And so there's just only so much that we can do. So we wanted to acknowledge that and address the past pain point that we've had over the large number of projects that we continue to carry forward. So you'll see that we will reduce the carry forward significantly by moving projects into tier two. So for tier one, we do have some projects that were, a couple of projects that are new and a few that were changed. So existing projects that were changed. We last year created a project to do storm drainage mapping. This is actually a regulatory requirement. Also, an important thing for us to have is we manage our stormwater resources. That work has been ongoing, but needs additional funding in order to be able to complete the work across the town. So that is being fully funded. We have a, what we would call an emergency drainage repair at Passona Oaks. So there's a crosshole under University Avenue that has created, that is failing and has created sinkhole in Passona Park. So we are working with the county to fix that. The Shannon Road repair, we are getting ready to bid that project at long last. So we are concerned that with the current climate, we may, budgets may come in, the bids may come in higher than we anticipated. So it is a preemptive strike. We have closed out, there was a retaining wall project that we've had for a number of years. We closed that project entirely, and all the money into Shannon Road in the hope that we might actually have the money when the construction bids come in. That project's actually getting ready to bid this week, I think. So you should hear more about that soon. We did continue funding, as the Town Manager mentioned earlier, for the roadside and open space vegetation management projects. Those are a wild hire for each, both of them. With Shannon Road, so there was a comment earlier also about, so that is a section of road that the town did receive from the county. We did settle with the county for one-point-five-six-five. So we did recoup some funding for that from the county. Continuing on to changes in tier one projects, we've repurposed the sport court and surfacing project. This was intended to research ports when it was initially created, to research the ports at Blossom Hill and Laurel and Pinata. We spent an enormous amount of stock time managing the Laurel and Pinata, the law court, because of noise-related impacts. We spent an inordinate amount of stock time managing the Lorreken Yada, the law court, because of noise related impacts and the division of the court. So we are seeking to modify that, that project, to refocus on Lorreken Yada, try to get the operation of that court into the division. That is more tunable for the neighbors as well as pickleball players before we try to create a new port of Blossom Hill. And we did create three new projects, so there's an IT disaster resiliency project, and all of your questions about that can go to our IT Director's site. And we did an auto gate there, we need to replace automobile access gates here at POV and at PDW, it's a modest, it's a modest project for fifty thousand dollars. And EV chargers, we accepted a grant, you may recall, we were at Congress in March, we accepted a grant from SBCE to put EV chargers at the Public Works Yard. And it needed supplemental funding to complete the project, so that is proposed through this, through this budget. Now, we did also add some new projects that we really think are needed, and we heard a lot from the community about, that we believe they're deeply important. But we don't have funding for them at the moment. These are tier two projects, when you look at attachment one, I think you'll see that they are phase one of a tier two. So I think these are ones we hopefully can move forward with, if funding allows. There are the traffic demand model, a Parks and Trails master plan, a condition assessment of Civic Center. And I will say, all three of those projects really key into our need to build out lifecycle assessments. Of our buildings, of our intersections, our traffic infrastructure, including at the end of our parks. So we, that's why we think those three projects in particular are very important, because they're going to feed that core goal of fiscal sustainability, of fiscal stability. And building out lifecycle assessments, but we just didn't quite get there with this proposed budget. And then there is discussion of how we're going to manage private trash enclosure issue on Village Lane. So we're still working through that, we put it into the proposed CIP, but it is, it is a tier two project. So the tier three projects, I mentioned earlier, you saw this list back in November at the study session. We have started, you know, we have some preliminary data of what's available and what we need for our assets, for roadways, for our buildings. In our parks, in our storm drainage, and it is a long list. And despite our PCI pavement condition index B two that the town manager mentioned earlier, we still have a significant dollar backwater of projects. As you can probably imagine, it's like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, you can really done, just soap on it to the other, go it back. But it's necessary vital work to be taken. So with that, we are available for questions.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, I, I think this is a great approach, I really appreciate it, I'm really, you know, putting a lot of thought into this. I think the council's talked about the importance of, of getting, you know, more myopic on a few projects than trying to do it all, and so I think this is great. Of course, I think we all knew that when the rubber met the road on that, we would have discussions on what, what are the sort of tiered projects. So I wanted to ask about a couple of the tier one projects, I mean, just get some more detail on those. Can you tell me more about the fleet service outdoor work area project?
Yes, I can, that was, that is a project at the Parks and Public Works Yard. And it was created, if I recall correctly, in the last, the last CIP. And I showed a photo.
Launch thing?
Yes, yes, so it is getting a work area for us to be able to work on larger fleet assets without having to, and being able to.
Okay, got it. Got a floor of this. Go ahead. The Oak Meadow Bandstand group, those wouldn't, you know, in my head, that's not like top priority, is it falling apart, and we already got money for it, what's going on there?
It, it, yeah, we do, we have grant.
Okay.
We have a state grant that, the funding that's considered a while, so, and it's almost. The design is almost done, so it's within striking distance, and our plan is to bid it this fall. I have my senior engineer tonight, so he's coaching me from the back, our plan is to bid that project this fall. And since we're so close and it has, there's been a lot of community interest in that project, we thought we should just keep it going, we will move this whole funding. Get back to the old kids, but we can do this.
I go to another council, council, okay. Councilmember ready? Do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a couple comments. Just, just a couple here. So on the tier two, you have different priorities, and I just want to make my comments on some of the priorities, and I, Maria's not here to disagree. But the first one I would say is you have the East Main Street crosswalks as tier two. I feel like that's a, a nice to have project. You know, I don't, I, I don't, I don't think I would put that as high on the list. And also, a, as I've mentioned before, the creek side turf replacement, I feel like it's, I haven't been down there now in six months or so. But it feel, I feel like that you could get some more life out of the park and before you throw away all that plastic. And so again, is it really priority two, maybe it should be a little bit lower or worse, whatever direction I want to go. Little bit worse priority. And then you have the Town Plaza turf repairs in the lowest priority, which it means it probably will never occur. I, I, we used to keep the Town Plaza sort of pristine, redoing it all the time, and I understand that doesn't make any sense. And it's not a, it's not in pristine condition, but it's in serviceable condition. But I think long term, you're going to need to redo it, and by the time you get around to tier four, priority four, tier two priority four projects. It's, it's going to need it before then, so I would expect it to move up in priority, probably, obviously not this year. But I don't think you're going to get to much of tier two, you're not going to get to any tier two this year, I think you said, or possibly you could. So though, I think it probably isn't going to last as sort of a bottom of the heap item, if you go far enough into the future. Those were my comments for now.
Okay, thank you. I had a question. So the Finance Commission has a work plan item to establish this structure for a multi-year CIP. Which will focus on identifying current and future capital needs, determine the funding level required to support those needs. And start moving toward a comprehensive approach to capital planning, I think they have an ad hoc committee working on that. To what extent does this proposal reflect working with the Finance Commission? Have any of this been incorporated into this planning process?
I'll look forward to having that discussion with them on Monday night this week. I have not met with that office this last summer, so I'm not quite sure where they, where they work, and I have, I don't know the topic.
I can speak a little bit to that, I have presented information about tiering the capital broadly, we have not initiated, gone through that process, that working out. It's an item that I thought I would ask if the Finance Commission would take on, so we do intend to have more conversation. A piece that's really important is the lifecycle replacement aspect of that, which needs more data. Saw two hundred and something billion dollar worth of improvements, I don't know, when we talk about street improvements, if that's a complete street type improvement of ADA cost of interest. But I think what we need to get the commission forth is understanding the annual cost of what we need to do is far next as well.
I do remember at some of the Finance Commission meetings, a discussion about, you know, not only what are the projects and what are they going to cost. But what are the funding mechanisms for them? And, you know, including looking at debt financing, looking at other transactions with regard to assets. So do you think that could be valuable, especially because of big numbers out there, to engage with Finance Commission on their thoughts? Some of them have deep experience dealing with very large capital budgets. The other question that I had, which was something that came up. Earlier was the number of vehicles that the town owns, so I think it was, I think there was a, a list. And then I think it was the fixed asset inventory that included not only vehicles, but trailers and anything wheels on it. But if I remember, the number was more than eighty items. And so to what extent are we considering liquidating some of those, potentially moving to a rental situation? And, you know, that has an impact both on the operating budget for our mechanics, and so for this project to build a larger garage. To service these vehicles, how, how we really looked at the right size, the right number of vehicles for a hundred and fifty person town staff. And whether we could, in fact, maybe liquidate a portion of that are currently fixed.
I, I recall we had this conversation back in October, we presented, we did that help, and I think that's where this issue came from. We have not advanced that analysis, because we're having sources right now to do that. But it is in the work plan, it's just a matter of what, are we going to get to it? I think, you know, we have talked with some companies about potential recent assets that, that they come with different challenges. In terms of how often we turn vehicles over, and they start to have to turn vehicles over in two years. Because the lease companies want to lease to us, probably, because they drive the vehicles very much. I will also say that of the eighty something, that were assets that we have, they are, and they are all sensitive. So, and we run, not working hard on staff, the, the town, so we're, and we're showing vehicles, we're, but. I, I think when we sit down and look at who, who's assigned to what and how we use vehicles, I think we might find we actually don't count two two.
I, I mean, I suspect the number's very large for a town of our size. So I would challenge just to have a good look at that, especially if looking at, you know, potentially making budget cuts and like block or reducing significant hours and services, things like that. That maybe we shouldn't own so many vehicles, particularly to stay, carry costs with them, that, that trickle in the operating budget. And the other, the other thing I think we talked about a little bit was a timing issue on this. In that there is a mandate to move to electric vehicles, and it might be better to unload some of these now, rather than when there's no longer a market for them. So.
We can evaluate it, but I think it's hard to unload a vehicle, it's on, it's on a daily basis, so we have to factor that into our.
Right. Okay, my input is that that's an area that we should also embed a division to the project. So, let's see, councilmember ready, do you have any further comments? No, okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the sport court, sport court resurfacing, kind of philosophy on that? Because my, yeah, because pickleball.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you talk.
Enough said, you can stop right there. We, so we had initially proposed resurfacing at Rankin Yada, there is an, that court is an asphalt base and it's cracked. So there is an actual difference of settling down, so it needs to be done. Last year, when we talked about capital, we did talk about converting and restriving a core at Blossom Hill Park. One of the courts, the tennis courts, to pickleball there as well. Those, the Blossom Horse needs some resurfacing work, they're, for a few years, they're okay. So the only reason we're doing people like the Blossom Hill is to create the ball. Our, our concern is that pickleball generates noise. We haven't found a way to mitigate that noise, that's unmitigated layers. So we spend a lot of time at Lorreken Yada, trying to manage noise issues. And I have deep concern that we then, we don't deal with the noise that we're in Yada, then we add the well of Blossom Hill, then we deal with, as I said, two courts. I'm very concerned about that. And so after a recent Parks Sustainability Commission meeting, it was recap, the town manager, you know, we continued. After two and a half years, I've been with the town, all two and a half years, I have had pickleball players and the abuse that that Parks Sustainability Commission. And it, and it's a real impact, you know, and I really think it's, it really is true, I mean, the receptors of these residents. These homes are only two, three, four, eight at most from that quarter. So we are making the recommendation that we repurpose the hundred K, not spend money at Blossom Hill and at Rankin Yada, spend money on local resurfacing. But also providing noise mitigation area there, to see if we can get that. It has worked in Saratoga, it's worked in other courts. So we think that actually helped boost by themselves, I mean, they have a variation, that court's been there since twenty. So that's, that's pretty strong recommendation, that's that.
If I may add, our school course director brought it to my attention, and from my perspective, let's finish one project before we start another one. And so this would have been incomplete, but definitely has these impacts that staff have to spend time on, maybe that's an overreiter.
That's helpful, yeah, my, my, my thought was not a disagreement with the, the changing it, it was more of a move to tier two. But you have persuaded me that this is important enough to, to address, so appreciate the background. Moving to the Gateway Art Project, have we purchased the cats yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are, we are, we are, we are committed to the cats.
Okay.
And in terms of whether it is in the project, you should, that full project probably will be up in three or four months.
Okay.
The cat will be here, and anyone can celebrate cats to their fullest cat acceptance.
That question was asked twice, that's where we learned status of love.
They are purchased and on their way to the gathering, they will be installed.
So we own the cats, and so.
We own the cats, we own the cats.
Okay, that's all super helpful. So I, I really appreciate the, the sort of classing the tier twos, I, I also have a few thoughts on those. So on the, it sounds like the Village Lane Trash Enclosure is not necessarily maybe a full capital project, we're still figuring that out. But I, I don't see that, you know, being a brand new concern, I wouldn't necessarily put that very top. And, and I think the, the traffic travel demand model, for me, is a mixed bag. Because I think the problem is, is the project that fixes it is the very last one in tier two, right? We, we know we have a traffic problem, the, the, I'm sorry, not that, it's actually the tier three. It's the, the Highway Seventeen Nine congestion hit for brother. And we're saying we're not, you know, that one's getting delayed. And so I'm not, yeah, that's not the top, it was, and that's just a, a comment. To me, the, the two that I'm most enthusiastic about in that first class are the Parks and Trails Master Plan and the Lynn Ave Pedestrian Path. I think the Lynn Ave Pedestrian Path is actually more of a public safety and, and I, I think that's a super important project to, to move forward. So I, I would say that. The, the Kennedy Sidewalk and bike lanes, I think that's really important, I think that's, you know, I think we have really good momentum. I, I recognize that's an expensive project, but I'll, you know, to share perhaps thinking about for next year. The, I've talked with a ton of Shannon Road neighbors, and they have all been, you know, it's, it's been back and forth, that they're all super, super happy with how it's turned out. And how the project has ended up going, and so I think there's, there's good momentum to sort of follow the same model with the Kennedy. I think we should wait as long as the United States Air Force will let us on the Oak Meadow plane. The Community Garden, I understand why that's lower down, but it's a super important one. Yeah, and then the, the Seventeen Corridor Congestion Project, so is that one? So is that one in tier two and tier three? How does that?
No, I'm actually glad you mentioned that project. It's not a tier two and it, uh, it shouldn't be. But it is, I, it is a tier two project indicating staff won't be spending a lot of time on it. But we're not the ones managing that project. So the good news is that project's going to keep working. In past budgets, I've been trying to push money into that project to be able to make that what's going to end up being an eleven to fifteen million dollar battery for the grant funding. And with this budget, we're saying we're going to pull that back. We're going to stop trying to to fund the, uh, fund the potential match that we know may come down the line. And if VTA and Caltrans are going to continue to work on design, we're going to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And and I guess just one comment I have on that one is, is I think that's one of the, you know, most fundamental improved quality of life and most kind of projects we could, we could complete. And BTA, you know, even with BTA's own budget woes, having been an alternative there now, paying more attention to those meetings. Every single meeting, they're approving fifty, sixty, seventy million dollar highway improvement plans, projects. And so, but all those, or most of those projects are partnerships with with other, be it Caltrans or another city or the county. And so I would just say everything that we can do to keep posturing in good faith that we are all in on that project, I think is is really important. Because I think my understanding of where BTA is at is that they're going to prioritize the projects that they think will get done and and that the money is there for. So I don't, you know, I I understand why, especially given the the budget, why we're not just setting aside more money on that project now. But I think that's a a super important one to continue.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just like to add a comment that due to the complexity of the capital projects and the potential impact to our budget, I'm very happy to just refer this to the finance commission going forward. I think you did a good job on the report. Yeah, I can give specific recommendations forward to help with that.
Go ahead. So last question I had was if staff can provide us an update on sort of the thinking on interim community center funding? Because I know that, you know, it's at the bottom of the list now. But there is money there and so I'm, you know, yeah, how we're thinking about that.
Yeah, well, and like I said, there were tough decisions here, right? And tough choices to make. And for me, that one went to tier two because there's no specific scope. So it was, you know, we've been, we did a couple of things with the movable wall just went in, the portable wall replacement. But after that, we don't have this time specific scope. So that's why it ended up in tier two. And then once I got into tier two, it really was for me, the priority, the priority ones in tier two were about how are we public safety or how are we going to build out that lifecycle cost analysis and asset assessment? But that's what went to priority one in there in tier two. And then it went from there and the community center. And it was, it's about community character, super important. But in in terms of how we, I was, my brain was working going public safety.
Yeah, that makes sense. I I completely agree with you. I think we have, the council hasn't, you know, given you clear direction on what to do with that. And so I I guess I'm, maybe this is, you know, proof of thought for all of us. I, you know, if if we don't give direction in this next year or so, I think we should have a bigger conversation about where that money should be spent. Because as long as it's just sitting in an account, I'm getting the interim community center account, it's, it's losing money and the, you know, intention of that was to make interim improvements on that space. And if we're saying there aren't interim improvements to be made on that space, I think we need to have a a discussion about priorities and and what to do with that money.
Okay. So I think this is a really terrific step forward to consolidate, to focus on things that we really can get done rather than allocating money to things that maybe aren't going to happen and then, you know, focus on so much. But I did want to just provide one other perspective, and that is that with some of the challenges that are, that I'm hearing from our community and our DEI commission in particular, I really want to make sure we get the balance right in providing some services, some capabilities that really do bring the community together. And so I kind of look at some of the, some of the things that are on the list, some of the things relating to spaces that the community can use. The interim community centers is one of them that I'm thinking more about the community garden, which would have a very tangible impact on inclusion in our community. And some of the other projects that maybe just on their own, you have to say how important was that, but realize that right now the federal government is putting in extreme strain on other kinds of resources that our community has. And so I think that when we come back and look at this, we should sort of give some extra points to projects that bring our community together in same space, person, and start, start to create more inclusive, tangible inclusive path speaker in town. You know, we do spend money on supporting commissions and doing other things. But I think move from sort of symbolic into real impact is where our capital improvements can make a difference on parks and the capabilities that we have to support our community. So I will take kind of another eye to that back at this. So that's the other.
I'll just agree with you. Yeah, I think that's, I think I completely agree. I think that's a really important point. You know, I I would, the the community garden, I think, one other, I I think the the community space getting extra points. And then the other thing that I think we, you know, fairly or unfairly have to be cognizant of is the things that we have told the community we're going to do. And so I think that is, you know, I think if if we told the community, oh, you know, in a really public way, we're, the community garden's on, on, on hold. I think that would be, you know, I think that would hurt a little bit, you know, understandably. And so I do think something like that, I would, you know, if nothing else, move up one priority class. Actually, I do think that's a, a very important thing for our town for everybody.
Okay. Any further comments on item two? Okay, thank you for the terrific work on that. And I can see it's, well, I I think a lot of work has been done. Thanks. Okay, and so now we move to item three, which is a consideration of the program that we have. And let me get a staff report. Okay.
Hello, Mayor, Council on St. Gall Community Grants. And so, you know, at one point I said we should do a higher level discussion about community grants. Here we go. This is your chance to do a higher level discussion of community grants. If you have the appetite for it at the moment, I know the community grants need a lot of time with different people and it's hard to, so if you're not ready for this, it's the high level discussion. There's some options for you, but this is the opportunity to have a conversation. You want to do that? Terms of, when I, when I say that for grants, the grants that, that we give out. So that's, that's defined in my mind is the general fund dollars that we directly give. So direct gifts of general fund dollars to an organization for them to do their own work or for them to do their own projects. It does not include any of the subsidies that that an organization might receive through indirect dollars or through, through rents or, you know, those types of things. That's not included. This is just, that's a direct dollar. It also shouldn't be used to pay any contract for a service. So sometimes there's an organization that we say, or organization X, we want you to perform this particular service on our behalf. Please put that service together and you do, you do a contract agreement with them. So it's possible that there's a nonprofit or there's an organization that might have a contract agreement with us for one thing, but then you'd be grants would perform us with something else. So just thinking those out in any case that pop up. So at the moment, we have a couple of different classes of grants. We've got a sustaining grants. Our sustaining grants go to a small handful of nonprofit organizations that we have been for for many years. And that supports core service leadership and their actual operations. The next one would be competitive one-time grants, competitive one-time grants. That's just full of money and organizations put an application, put in the most objective way we can. We score those applications and give out those grants. There's also a, a few little light items, different departments. That CDB has one, Town Manager's Office has another one. Where we're giving little grant of money. CDB specifically goes to West Valley Community Services for rental assistance. Town Managers, one was, it has state loops and shower rooms free. Two things really positively shifts. They got put into Town Managers. So there's a couple of grants for different light items. And then there's the occasional time when an organization comes to you directly as council members and says, really need some money for something, and then you consider it outside of any of these processes. So we've got all those different things, all those are kind of captured here. In total, when we look at the last four years, we gave away one million, one hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. And that doesn't include the extra five hundred thousand in car for money that we, we gave as well. And that's super amazing, but we can't sustain it. So like, have a little discussion about that. That's a lot of money, which is why we have for you a total alphabet soup of things to consider. Put the staff report there. I'm going to go backwards through these. So starting with G, which is consider other options, implementing the town council vision. Just a heads up, if anything else that we discussed here, anything we discussed tonight isn't working for you and you want to go in a totally different direction, you can do that. So I'll make sure that that's front and center, that take it any way you want to go with it. We're not locked in anything. I'm not pushing one specific thing for another. My favorite, but you know, I'm, I'm not, you can go any direction you want. Got a recommendation F. Recommendation F is no matter what you do, it would be really helpful if you drafted a resolution or we brought you a resolution that limited outside, that limited the giving to whatever process you agree on. And this is a couple of things. One, it, it supports kind of consistency and fairness and the budget clarity. It's worth writing communications to the public and it's also going to add a layer of protection for the town and for you as council members in terms of when organizations come forward and they, they ask for funds. And we can say, no, we've got a resolution that says we do this. This is what we're going to say too. And when I say you as a council, that's not just five of you sitting in this moment. It's like fifty years of councils in the future. You don't have anything at the moment that says that locks you into this is really what we do. And so puts you in an awkward position, I think. And it puts us in an awkward position when organizations come forward outside of a process or or whatever. So this kind of gets you, if you put a reservation in place, regardless of what you decide to do, that reservation, I think, will be really helpful. But I've got recommendations D and E, those are a package deal. So D and E is if you don't want to change anything at the moment, we just do status quo. So we keep exactly what we've got right now. The deal with that one though, is that I I didn't put a dollar amount in the budget board. Every year I put a dollar amount in the budget, you, you give me a different dollar budget. So this, this year I didn't put a dollar amount in there. So if you want to go with status quo, you just want to keep it exactly the same. You've got to give me a dollar about that you want to set specifically in the competitive one time grants. When you put a dollar around there, that's not reflected in the budget yet. So that's going to raise the budget by whatever level you decide to put it there. You can put a button in there, okay? Then I've got a recommendation A, B, and C, and that's another package deal. And so A, B, and C is to continue the sustaining grants and keep those, because those are super light with council priorities. It's to check to make sure that the organizations and the dollar accounts that I put in the staff report actually meet your intentions. But there was a little bit of second guessing on my part, so we'll make sure that that's all been there. And then the third part of that is to sunset competitive one-time grants, redirect some of those funds to the sustaining grant, kind of bolstering the sustaining grants. And then that'll also realize the dollar savings to us, right? So did that one as a package, you would only have the sustaining grants going forward. You wouldn't have the competitive grants. Where I kind of came to that is that the sustaining grants, again, those are, those are operational or core service to the organizations that receive those saving grants. They're all human service needs and they all overlap with council priorities. Sometimes in a very, very direct spell that way. And other times a little more of a nexus, but there's definitely that overlap of council priorities. We've got a long history of continuous funding for four of the specific organizations that are listed there. And then there's two more that we're going to, I'm going to add in because they were put into the town managers but, but, and has initiatives. Pull them out of that by, and I got a statement into this one because it makes it easier for me to track all those things. So, so it's only six organizations, a small amount of organizations, but all of them are core service operational. And those organizations just earmarked for them already. They don't have to compete for it. Every two years they kind of, they renew with that signature sort of thing. Different between that and the competitive one-time grants is those competitive one-time grants. And the reason why I feel like you can sunset that as a program is that those ones are for a new project or a service. They're not for operational or, or needs. So if you are an organization and you've got a new idea for something, it's those one-time grants. That's what those are, those are really structured for it. As a result of that, being that it's not for a new project, you knew, I mean, for a new project or a service, not operational. If, if these went away, it's not going to impact any one organization directly in terms of their services. They still have the opportunity to add some on you, right? So there's that piece of it. The competitive one-time grants are any category. There's no funding that any organization that applies for it is going to get it. So again, if you sunset it, the competitive one-time grants, because an organization wasn't guaranteed to get that money anyway, it probably is not going to affect their core services. It's not going to affect their core operation. There are also one-time allocations of funds. A same organization can develop for any one-time grant, but for a new product or something. So for those reasons, and also because council cannot really target where those ones go. Those ones are just really good grant writers, really good grants. But it doesn't, I I feel that we could probably let that one go at this predicted time without having the huge impact on the organizations in the way that if we did something with sustaining grants, which would have a huge impact. So if you take that A, B, and C recommendation kind of together to chump, I would put it in a nutshell as saying you, you would target your limited funds for the greatest impact for your priorities. And that would kind of be what I'm trying to get at with that one. The numbers, if you did that one as a package deal, would be that we would relocate forty three thousand from the one-time competitive grants and we take thirteen thousand eight hundred from CMO's budget. And we put those into the sustaining grants, so we're bolstering that sustaining grant category. That takes sustaining grants for about seven thousand dollar level to a hundred twenty six, a hundred twenty seven thousand dollar level. The other thing about sunsetting the competitive one-time grants is that it's, in addition to the dollar amount based on last year's number that we gave out in that category, would save us about a hundred seventy three thousand dollars. This competitive one-time grants are a huge amount of work to administer in the way the sustaining grants are just not. The whole process of the, the competitive grants, getting everything in, running through the whole process is just incredibly sapatosive. So we're thinking it's approximately about a hundred and twelve staff hours. And that's staff hours, I'm on my part and my staff's part, but we got town attorney, we got the clerk's office, we got plans. We got a whole bunch of different people on our department's, uh, wrapped in this. So that's that package D, B, and C there. Take a quick look at the proposed amounts for the sustaining grant recipients. Uh, take a quick look at the proposed amounts for the sustaining grant recipients. Um, live hope, senior nutrition, generally we gave, in the past we gave twenty-three thousand uh each year. Last year you said, please give them an extra twenty-five thousand. Um, that, you actually got it, that was a one-time thing. But in the back of my mind, I was thinking, I bet they didn't really need one time on that one. So, um, I put that one at forty-eight thousand, twenty-three plus another twenty-five, forty-eight thousand. Um, West Valley Community Services, uh forty thousand, uh that's gonna be twenty thousand for general support services and twenty thousand for rental assistance. Um, uh programs. That doesn't include an extra fifteen thousand that's coming from CDB for rental assistance programs. Now, last year you put twenty-five thousand in for rental assistance programs and you asked me to make that as a competitive one, to have uh people compete with that. What ended up happening is I have three organizations that are doing rental assistance programs. So I've got West Valley Community Services, I've got um. Same as Paul Society and I've got uh Los Angeles, uh T-Race Association. So I've got three, so everyone, so there was got a smaller part of money. Uh, I've got three contracts that I've got to run, I've got to reset the people I got coordinated with, all these things. Um, on my side, be a little easier if you just had one. And since West Valley Community Services is getting the fifteen thousand already from CDB. Um, and they have sort of the largest organizational support network within MM. I was just thinking, hey, let's just get all of that, that would be easier on my part. Um. Next one down is uh council support services for youth, uh twelve thousand five hundred. Uh, that's. Same with the human in the past, next door solutions to domestic violence, twelve thousand five hundred. Same with the Episcopal Church and Los Gatos Methodist Church, that's the uh pantry program and the shower service. And those ones that were um listed in CMO's unhoused initiatives. Gonna pull them back over here to uh sustaining grants, just like they track them all together. Those ones we, those ones are also the entry points to the hotel program. So that was what we had to keep. Um, regardless of what we do, if we're gonna keep a hotel program, so. Um, anyway, to to recap, I got that block of three, the continued sustaining grants that align with your priorities. Make sure this own allocation of these groups are 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 good. And it's sunsetted competitive one-time grants, that's one block of stuff you can do. Or you could just keep the status quo, keep everything just the way it is, but you gotta give me a dollar amount, put it in there, that's the budget. And uh, you could say, whatever you decide to do, please put together resolutions so that we can kind of quantify this, so that it helps us and you in the future. Or you could consider anything else you want to do. And with that, what are your questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How do you have so much energy?
It was a sleepy time team.
Okay.
Council member ready? Get laid over there.
Uh, I don't really have any questions. My only comment was, I mean, it sort of makes sense to eliminate the. The the one-time grants because it's so staff intensive. Uh, generally, I'm okay with the list on the sustaining grant list there.
Okay, uh, vice mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, so a few thoughts. So I I really like how you have restructured the sustaining grants. It's a great idea, I think, uh, you know, doing that. Those organizations are great. I think we thought about that, makes a lot of sense. Um, what what I. Don't like is that overall, that's, if that's what we did, is we just only did sustaining grants. We would go from providing last year four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to nonprofit organizations. To a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars this year, which is not a cut I'm comfortable with. Um, especially, and I think this is really, this is especially important for me. Uh, this year, all of our nonprofit partners are going to be hit with. Greater demand and less resources because of what's happening in the federal government. And the federal government is currently contemplating uh. Ways to remove uh tax advantaged statuses of certain nonprofits, so that's going to hurt them even more. So I think that I I I do not want to make such a drastic cut to the to the dollar amount we're providing. I I half buy the argument about the um competitive one-time grants. I I I absolutely think it it is true that some of those projects are probably not, you know. Ones that we should be investing in, but I do think that the the problem is, is that there are ones that that really are worth. Um, I wrote down a few ones that from last year that I thought were really good. Um, we have the organization, the uh education foundation. That used ten thousand dollars to promote emergency preparedness and bought um uh dozens of loner generators that have been distributed all throughout the community. And it's just like a huge success, um, and that couldn't have been done without this money in the, you know, bank through your buy, I think we bought thirty generators, so I think it was super, super meaningful. Um, and and has kept, you know, I've talked with some of the people that have gotten um those generators, it's keeping CPAP machines on, it's keeping the refrigerator on for dialysis, you know, all of that really important. Um, I thought Los Gatos Thrive Project with just fifteen hundred dollars was able to do five of these really meaningful events to get people to ride the bus more. Like, that's something really cool and innovative. Um, I could name others. Um, but I think there are. Things that come out of that that are really meaningful and impactful. Um, so so I was thinking something like. Um, uh decreasing the total amount, something, you know, maybe we decrease it by a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars overall. So we, that could put that as a three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then you you go with. The recommendation of the one twenty-six for sustaining, keep that. And then have a smaller scale competitive program that is administered by an outside party. And then the one, you know, um, letter after GH piece that I would add is. This was uh, uh council member ready came up with this idea and I think it's very smart and I think works well, especially if we're trying to limit. The uh amount of funding that people just come ask for us on the side. I think that that given the uncertainty and the political climate and the budget and all these things. Uh, it would make sense for us to set aside, uh, the number I had come up with, the seventy-five thousand dollars. To be allotted at some point during the year at the council's discretion to. Respond to urgent or unanticipated community needs, because I think that, I think that is a real. Something that we really do need to think about is if, you know, if SNAP funding gets cut, right? If if Medicaid funding gets cut, if if uh Medicare funding gets cut. We are going to have a lot more community members in significant, you know, who need a lot more. And and I think they will look to us and I would like to be able to to meet some of those needs, especially because we have this um uh program here. So so I'm, I don't know that I'm quite ready to to let go of the competitive. Um, but some of the, I really like the the way sustaining is constructioned. I would like to set aside money. That we know we will allocate, but we won't allocate more than that. We can adopt the resolution, but we with that in mind. And and if we had to get rid of the competitive, I would want to increase the sustaining. And they can look a little bit more about organizations that have gotten competitive grants in the past and who else, other services we could be missing.
Uh, make a couple of comments. Um. I remember be- before we really had the competitive grant program and. There was a constant amount of time at the council. And off time from people meeting with council members, making the case for uh for a brand. And um, I thought that the program, I think that the program that we have. Adds a level of objectivity to it and uh is is a very good process. And when we were faced with a real crisis during COVID, we put more money into that because of the rubric. Because of the criteria and uh the really fine work that our staff did on it. Uh, I uh am not at the point of making a recommendation on this because I don't know where we stand. I mean, if we have to uh cut half of our grants or two-thirds as being proposed here. Uh, that these might be things to think about. Uh, like I said, I'm. I don't feel like we have the financial foundation to be making these recommendations at this point. And so uh, I'm uh, I'll hold for now. Uh, I uh. Have seen a lot of benefit of the competitive grant program. The other thing competitive grant does is it. It moves toward new things and innovation, rather than continually funding the same organization. And the sustaining grants uh kind of keep the competition out of uh the process of getting. Uh, money that comes from our taxpayers. So uh, I I'm more in favor of the competitive grants, uh making some of their stress. I think it only depends on how much money we're dealing with and if we're really dealing with the situation. Uh, that we have to make uh such drastic cut in services uh to our community at this point. Uh, we've exhausted the other uh opportunities that we have in terms of. Uh, cost savings, revenue enhancements, uh efficiency gains, uh offloading assets. Uh, and other things, uh that I could come back to this, but I'm I'm not prepared to make recommendations of this.
Other thoughts? Uh, Rob. Yes, council member ready?
Um, yeah, my thought is. If you look at the total funding, this is accelerated in the last three years. Look where we were three years ago. We were at a hundred and fifty. And I recall us being at a hundred, um, not much before that. And now. The current fiscal, you were talking about four hundred and thirty thousand. I I think what happened was. Uh, you know, our normal ability to fund this was something in the hundred thousand and we decided maybe a hundred and fifty thousand range. Then we got the extra money from ARPA and we said, well, this is a great place to put that money. Well, we don't have ARPA money coming anymore. We're back to what can our normal budget sustain? And in fact, you know, our budget's actually worse than it was before the pandemic and we got ARPA. So I I don't see how we can keep up anywhere near the four hundred and thirty thousand. I think um, council member Moore mentioned taking a hundred thousand off of it. I think we should be back closer to the hundred and fifty number, um, however we do that. Um, I, this, I think this is the first time I've seen these numbers presented this way. Um, I, like, I can't remember this, where it says other one-time general fund direct dollar grants, a hundred thousand. I can't recall what what we spent that on. I don't recall how the one-time grants got to two hundred and thirty thousand. Are we including staff time FTEs in this also to make this number this large?
Uh, no, that's direct, so that that's direct dollars. So that, those are the dollars that went out. Uh, the hundred thousand dollars was an ask by, uh, in one year, was an ask by uh Numio. Um, for a hundred thousand dollar grant that came directly to council. And the year before that was a, an ask by KCAT. Uh, for a producers program, which is a hundred thousand dollar to ask them. So neither of those went through the grant process. They were granted, they were given directly by council at the ask of uh of organizations.
And again, we thought we could afford those because we had ARPA money available. We don't have an ongoing ARPA stream of money anymore. And so again, I would say these numbers are way, way larger, way, way, way larger than we can sustain.
Okay, true. Yes, council member Vennelli.
So for me, um, you know, it's difficult for me to rationalize grant funding, funding with a three-point-seven million dollar deficit. So I too am not ready to make a recommendation at this time until I have more information.
I'd just add one more comment is that I appreciate the analysis and the way of approaching this with a fresh eye. Uh, to uh providing services to the community and balancing uh the kinds of. Community needs uh that we hear about all the time. So uh, I think this is good. I think we will move forward on something. Uh, coming out of this work, I just, for me personally, I'm not ready to do that.
Um, I may ask. Uh, I've got to do something with it in the budget or not to. Um, and we've got a budget document, you're gonna, you're gonna finalize the budget um. At a meeting coming up in in May. And then generally I would, if there is a competitive grant process, I would open up those notifications. Um, as soon as you you do that. So, um, uh, if it's, if it uh pleases the council, um. I could bring this, I could pull up, I'm announcing a a grant program and say that the grant program for this year is a little further analysis. And we're not gonna open it up in, and 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 in in June, July. Uh, we can bring this back to you after you have some other budgets, uh things in place. You can adopt the budget without having to worry about this piece in it. And I could bring this back later, uh, when you've got a little more time outside of the budget and uh support the process.
Vice mayor.
I I would want at least the hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in there as a placeholder. Uh, I I would, I would think it would make sense. I I don't know if we can get to a compromise of the number. I would think something like a two hundred thousand dollar placeholder or a bare minimum a hundred and fifty thousand dollar placeholder. Um, because I I am committed to at least the sustaining grant program.
Right. I've got the one twenty-six eight hundred as a, as a place. So when I said it didn't have a placeholder number, so I've got one twenty-six eight hundred as a placeholder number. In there now.
Oh, that's, that's in there now, okay.
For what, what you've got here. I just.
This in addition to.
Yeah, I didn't put a placeholder on top of that or anything. So if you're good with that, you can see that.
Yeah, so sustaining grant, I don't think is an issue at this time unless we do a reduction, keep a reduction. I think what we, what could help is by forgetting the piece of the competitive and the resolution. Do you want to express the resolution at any time if somebody's asking for money from the town, that they go through this process? Whatever that process will end up being, whatever dollar amount. And then secondly, deal with the community grant, competitive grant, layer the process, budget. Knowing that we can always change the date, start. Yeah, we can use the grant process so that you have the time to make a decision. And what do you make of the decision? Let's say in June, if you're approving it, it's the last minute, maybe we did it. You still have a grant program, they just may not start, you know, they start a month later, a month later, I suppose.
Vice mayor.
Yeah, I I would still support putting, that's, that's very helpful. That's good to know. And I'm glad that that's still in there. I think that's, that's meaningless heard apart. I would wanna put something like a seventy-five thousand dollar placeholder in there, uh, or whatever we do, because I do think we should do something.
Okay, well, we we can't vote on anything tonight, so there have been some thoughts that have been expressed. Uh, I'm not sure that. That there's more that we can do on this, uh, at this point. I think that. You can appropriate to make a motion or to provide a specific direction.
I won't make a motion, but but I do think that because of us not taking action while the, while we're talking about this is a decision. And so then what we're deciding is we're only doing sustaining at this time. And that's it. Is that?
And if I think, we hear the council of a variety of funds. I think the delivery budget may not be anywhere near what the final budget looks. And so I think the conversation you kind of, after finance commission goes through the aspects that they wanna recommend to the council. We're gonna present the budget, the CIP items uh to the actual commission. We can figure out where this piece falls, because it currently falls in tier three when we look at the grant program, the sustaining grant. So we can look at this, the context that, so in the final, so it's not here now, it doesn't mean, oh, oh, if I don't get it in now, it's gone for good, it's never coming back, no, not. Or the opposite, we don't know what that final budget is for.
If uh the grant program needs some direction sooner, we can put it on the agenda on May sixth. And take that off separately in terms of the timing of the grant program. Uh, I still, we want the actual numbers to come through uh the process that we've said, which is I have the finance commission. Uh, look at things because I don't want to be cutting things uh before I have confidence in the foundation. But if there's a decision about whether to start uh the grant program, we could put that on the agenda for May sixth.
Two things to consider, on May sixth, you have two developed projects, especially in all these, so those are gonna be pretty long. Two things to consider, on May sixth, you have to develop projects, especially in all these, so those are going to be prolonged. Secondly, if you're going to start considering budgetary actions, because you already mentioned the twenty days. The finance commission needs to see the budget for, if it goes to council, you're not at that twenty days.
No, I understand. So what I'm suggesting is if there's a need to have a motion in order to push back a date on the program.
I don't, no, I don't need a motion to, no. Okay. Right, yeah, but that date is just, it's kind of, it's kind of works in a flow, but as long as it's cool with everybody. That, that, that date doesn't have to be that day, that can flow back later into the year, then we've got time to work on it. I just want to make sure that it's, it's okay with that.
Yes, I mean, I didn't sign the grant for the last year until after I arrived, and we're talking five, six months later. And so I think administratively, well, if we have a grant program, whether it's what we want, feel it, that it has time to permit staff.
Personally, I don't want to be in a position of giving grants, deploying them back.
Okay, Councilmember Rennie?
The, the one thing I would add, well, maybe two things. Yeah, I was thinking two hundred thousand or less in this area. I don't just look at it as the dollars, I look at it as opportunities for, for improving operational efficiency with, with staff. And, you know, they've indicated this is a very cumbersome process. I'm hearing the desire to not necessarily get rid of the one time grants. But I'm wondering if staff could, I don't want to turn it into too big of a process. But think about a way to simplify the one time grant, so it doesn't take a hundred and twelve hours of labor. But maybe only sixty hours or something. Maybe it's, we limit the subject, possible subjects, I don't know, somehow you limit the number. But something, think about ways to, to make it a less cumbersome process. As I said, I was kind of willing to get rid of it, just because it feels like it's a lot of extra staff time for. I don't know, I question how much extra value. So just a suggestion, maybe, maybe their staff has some ideas that come up or something on, on how to. Limit it to the point that it, it's not so cumbersome.
Hey, Vice Mayor?
I was, I think in the staff report even, there was a suggestion about offloading to another organization, like a foundation. That, that, where, what they do is administer grants. So if we, you know, use the two hundred thousand dollar number, do one twenty five for sustaining fifty or seventy five. That you give to a foundation and they choose who gets it. And I think that would be a good way to sort of square this issue that we're dealing with. Just, you know, with, I think it would be important to still give that organization the rubric, the rubric reduced in the past. And also have the commissioners that have historically weighed in on the process, speak with those grant makers. But I think that's a good, I think that's a good compromise.
Anything else on this topic?
All right, so we finished topic number three, and that concludes our agenda for this evening. So thank you again, all, for everyone who's worked so hard on this. And this is, I think, a very important step forward.
Okay, thank, thank you. Time for breakfast.
Enjoy Italy.